Think we're good, then I'll welcome everyone to the September thirteenth meeting of the Wakefield Board of Appeals. Remind you that the the meeting is being recorded. And we're going to start with a roll call and I will note that member Dave Hatfield is not present. Chip Tarbell. Chip, you're muted?
Yeah, I'm here.
Jim McPain?
Here.
Joe Pride?
Here.
Greg McIntosh?
Here.
Mickey Feely?
Here.
And Kasumi Humphries?
Yeah.
This point, I'll ask Joe as the clerk to read the the legal notice.
Yeah, you got it. Uh, consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen. To a meeting in real time, not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dialing number one three oh one seven one five. Eight five nine two, meeting ID, ID eight five four two one five 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 one seven eight, passcode. One four nine one zero five. Please use only dial in or computer now both as audio feedback will distort the meaning this meeting will be audio or video recorded in compliance. With the Americans with Disabilities Act, this location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language accessory assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or you or if you require any other accommodations, please contact the town disabilities coordinator. William Renaud, town engineer at seven eight one two four six six three zero eight as far in advance of the event as possible, every effort will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable accommodations. Every arrangements to remove an accessory accessibility barrier for you, one continued hearings, two. Twenty four dash six, Michael A. Picardi, application for determination and our filing with. Respect to a continuation and extension of a nonconformous uses. Under Article nine, section one ninety dash fifty of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to. Allow construction of an addition to existing. Single family dwelling, the property is shown as map point three lot castle. O L E of the assessors map and is located at one, excuse me, at nine Woodville Circle. For other appeals.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Hope you get to the continued hearings, as is our custom, there's been a. A couple of requests for continuances, so I'll read those into the record first and we'll move to continue those. Letter dated September twelfth from attorney Brian McGrail. Uh, dear Mr. Chair, please continue regarding Mira LLC and Sky Group Investments LLC. Located at one Audubon Road, Wakefield, case numbers twenty three sixty six, twenty three sixty seven and twenty three sixty eight. Dear Mr. Chair, please continue this matter until your meeting on October eleventh. In that the client is in the process of changing building designs at the corporate level which they desire to utilize in Wakefield. The current extension for the board to render we end or file the decision is through October thirty first, twenty twenty three. Please let this letter confirm that the applicant has agreed to extend the time for the board to render and or file any decisions. Until November thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we continue this to October. Eleventh meeting and extend the time to make a decision till November thirtieth, as the client has requested.
Second.
And discussion. Voting members, regular voting members and Greg, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Another letter dated September eleventh from attorney Brian McGrail regarding Northeast Warehouse Boston LLC, three Melvin Street. Case numbers twenty three seventy seven, twenty three seventy eight, twenty three seventy nine. Dear Mr. Chair, please continue this matter until your meeting on October eleventh, twenty twenty three. And that we are still in the process of working on items requested by the board. The current extension for the board. The current extension for the board to render and or file decision is through October thirty first, twenty twenty three. Please let this letter confirm that the applicant has agreed to extend the time for the board to render and or file any decisions. Until November thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
Mister Chairman, I missed it, was it to October eleventh meeting?
Yes, yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. Um, I moved that we continue this to our October eleventh meeting. And that we accept the offer to extend the timeframe till November thirtieth. As requested by the applicant.
Second.
Any discussion? Regular voting members and Greg, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes, uh, matters continue to October eleventh, so if anyone was here for those two hearings. Will, uh, hear them again on October eleventh. First item then on the agenda on the continued hearings is case twenty three fourteen, twenty three fifteen, twenty three sixteen, twenty three seventeen, Kingman Block LLC. Located at three sixty nine through three seventy one Main Street.
Good evening, Mister Chair, uh, for the record attorney Brian McGrail. On behalf of the applicant, uh, England Block LLC. Mister Chair, uh, as you mentioned, this property is situated three sixty nine, three seventy one Main Street. In Wakefield. Um, we are, I'm here by myself tonight because I think we're getting to the end of this project and everyone's kind of done their work beforehand and or prior to tonight's meeting. Uh, so I really didn't see it necessary for any of our my experts to be here tonight. Um, as we're trying to finalize matters for this project. Um, I submitted materials to the board, um, on Friday. Uh, they included, uh, included, again, I'd sent another copy of the TAC memo, Traffic Advisory Committee. Which you would receive just before your meeting on August sixteenth, but I just sent that to refresh board members memories. And then we also, uh, tonight received. Uh, just before the meeting, a final sign off by DPW on the project. Um, and, um, I know you just got it, but, uh, as I usually do, I work, um. Very closely with the engineering department to make sure that all their conditions. Uh, that they're requesting on on projects are are dealt with and appropriately, uh, referenced. Um, I'll get into some of the DPW conditions, um. As I go through the conditions that I submitted, uh, uh, in regards to this project that the board had asked me to at the last meeting. Uh, but before I go there, I want to reference that we've updated the architectural plans. Um, and I'm going to share those. To kind of highlight some things that, uh, the board had wanted to show you that they've been inserted. Hang on, some reason. We'll hard time opening the attachment. Hang on one second, I gotta log out of that, for some reason the attachment won't open. Try it again.
Uh, while Brian's doing that, I'm gonna ask members of the public, if you're not speaking. Uh, I'm gonna ask you to mute yourselves, there's a phone on there, there's a couple of folks that aren't muted. There's a phone, seven eight one, seven six oh, seven eight one one, we're getting a little bit of noise coming out of that, so please mute.
I apologize, but for some reason I'm having a technical issue here that my PDFs aren't opening on my computer.
Same thing just happened to me, I tried to open the legal notice and for some reason it wouldn't open when Joe was reading it.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, that's a problem, okay, so, um. So I sent these in an email, Mister Chair, Friday, could you potentially try to open the, uh, architectural plan I sent with Tim Broadway?
See what I can do.
If you could find, or maybe any board member might be able to find it on the email that I had sent into the, uh, into Gale on Friday.
You want the Tim Broadway documents, Brian?
Oh, I'm sorry, Greg, thank you, I apologize, no, three sixty nine, three seventy one, man.
I think they're working for me, you want the architectural?
Yeah.
Yeah, I could share, it worked for me.
Oh, great, perfect, I don't know what's going on with it, but. Kind of a want to get away moment.
Is that working?
Yep.
Yep. Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg, really appreciate that. So, um, what I wanted to point out, Greg, if you could scroll down, um, a couple of things at the board, the these plans have been finalized, but some things that the board wanted added, next sheet, please. Um, right there. Um, if you could go up a little bit. We've added a note on the plan, you can see it at the top left. All exhaust and venting penetrations through the roof, no exhaust or venting on the facade. So that has now been added and you're gonna see that pretty much on a lot of the sheets as you go through, and if you could go down, Greg, uh, to the next one, please. Yeah, it's there again, we're consistent with that, and if you could keep going. And. That should, that's on the roof plan, it says it again, if you could keep going. And keep going, one more note that I want to point out. Okay, go back up, Greg, I think it's on the, uh, might be on the. Spec sheet, if you could go up one sheet, please. Keep going down.
I'll go down.
Yep. Right there, uh, bottom of eight one oh six, thank you. Light fixture, general notes, all light fixtures to be DocSky compliant. Uh, and two, uh, the garage lighting to be motion censored except for necessary emergency lighting. That was another condition that the board wanted referenced on the plan, so, so those are now taken care of, and then if you could, Greg, go to the materials, uh, sheet, please.
Got a little bit of lag, we're getting there.
There we go. So we've taken off all of the, uh, Greg, you pointed this out, we, you know, if you remember, the architect had a comment on the specs and would say, or similar. Uh, so that's been cleaned up and taken off. So I think at this point, these architectural plans are finalized. I think we've addressed everything. Um. And and then, um, on our site plan. Um, we had, um. What we've done on the site plan, and we went over that, we have added, uh, the easement. Uh, for the, um. The arts and cultural exchange, uh, in the back for access, that's on the plans, and then I've got a condition on that that I submitted. And we've also done that for the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department. Um, and put their easement on that plan, which the board saw last time. The only changes on the site plan were engineering department driven, some things that Bill Renaud wanted changed. Uh, he wanted it, uh, to show all the changes that have taken place on Albion Street. That's all been incorporated. Uh, he and his department have fully now signed off on these plans that are presented to you tonight. So, um, they're fine. Uh, and completed in compliance with what is required, I mentioned that, uh, the tac memo. Um. Do you, Mister Chair, or any board members, uh, see and need for me to go through that, I know it's been submitted, hopefully you had a chance to read it, but it's about as clean as it can get. Um, they had just wanted to confirm that sidewalk improvements were going to be done. Uh, and that has been worked through the town engineer to put on the plan, it's on the site plan.
Any questions on attack memo from board members? Okay. And Brian, um. I know we just got the memo from the engineering department, so if you could just make sure that they're incorporated. There's only two or three items that are called out specifically, just make sure they're incorporated in the conditions.
Yeah, and I think actually from the memo tonight, I I I will do that, and I think from the memo that I got at five o'clock tonight, that it's gonna, there's gonna be maybe. I'm gonna, uh, go through the conditions, but I think there's gonna be. A couple of things that are gonna get added.
Yeah, I didn't see anything major, I scanned it, it's pretty straightforward.
I don't think we had a condition on like the yes bill plan, I think that might have been. So I'm gonna go through it again with it, and I usually. I'll run it by the town engineer and make sure it's got everything that he wants.
Yeah, I think it was beyond that, I think it was just I and I, and then. Sequencing, um, on understanding a secret thing for them, and then. Uh, commitment to access to the back and nine Albi.
Correct, yeah. Um, so then I've also submitted an O and M plan on this, um, which is has become pretty. Um, standard fare for projects of this nature, I'm happy to go through that, I don't know if the board has had an opportunity to see it. Um, I know you've seen it, I don't know if you had a chance to go through it, but it's pretty, pretty standard fare. Um, on these projects, and this one I included what you've done in the past for restaurants, considering that there's gonna be a restaurant use. Uh, in this building.
Hey, Brian, I just had one comment, actually moving back a step, if we're not gonna go through it, just on the draft conditions that are there now. On.
Oh, I'm gonna go through those, Greg.
Oh, you are, oh, okay, alright, cool, okay.
Now, let's get through the, um, let's get through the O and M.
Yeah, no, I I thought he went through, just said.
Nope.
I I said even. Conditions, okay.
The O and M is fairly standard at this point, and the conditions are specific, that's where I'll go through those in detail.
Any questions on the O and M that was sent out Friday? Okay, hearing none, um. Chip, you trying to say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say I've looked at them, they're. As Brian said, they're standard. Um, we've done enough of these now that. Um, you know, I I think the most important thing. On the O and M plan is that. You know, it's kept in an office, it's readily accessible and as management. To these different buildings change that they actually understand that there is an O and M plan. I don't know how to enforce that, but.
Well, it's it's in the conditions, it'd be compliant.
No, I know it is, but.
Yeah.
So at least if we ever had to. Go after it, we could, cuz it's there.
Right, that that it's generally complaint driven business and. It gives the, uh, building inspector a hammer, uh.
Yeah.
Having issues.
Yeah, it's great because it deals with all landscaping, maintenance, replacement, you know, and and that's your hammer. Uh, if they, if they don't maintain the upkeep of the siding outside of the building. You know.
Right, no, I mean, we've got it down pretty well at this point.
Yeah. Okay, if I can proceed, Mister Chair, I'd like to go through the conditions.
Please do.
Okay, so actually, I'm I'm lucky, for some reason my word documents are opening. Uh, thank goodness, so. Uh, these are the draft conditions, uh, can you see them?
Yes.
Okay, so some of these have become standard fear also, you know, the first one is, you know, that basically you have to comply with all conditions, and it's the board retaining jurisdiction. Uh, for minor modifications, um, this has become, you know, basically a verbatim condition on on most of your projects. Um, number two was important because this was an issue that, uh, Greg brought up, because the. The architect had, uh, had referenced, you know, some things on the on the architectural plans that might change on the old bank building, removal of windows. And, um, so what what, and Greg had pointed out that, well, you know, it should be up to us to determine if what you're doing on that building is a minor modification, so. I think I've addressed it here, I'm happy to entertain any any, uh, tweaks to it, but the the position says. It is anticipated that there will be alterations or changes to the original bank building on the property, including but not limited to windows, doorways. And openings. It will be in the discretion of the board to determine if any of these alterations or changes can be approved as minor amendments. Or if they are material, thus requiring a new hearing. So it's not a verbatim, oh, do whatever you want, you can change the building, it's that we have to come back here, you decide if it's minor, if not, we have to refile.
I guess I would refer back somehow to the plans, like as noted on. I don't know, whatever that page was, C three or whatever.
Okay.
So so it re, cuz obviously. Any changes come back to us. Um, and and it's our decision. Whether it's my modification, but this is referring specifically where it says on the plans. Um, I forget the exact wording, but something along the lines of, you know, the. There will be changes that that change isn't just automatically approved because we approved plans that said there will be changes.
Got it, okay, I'm just making a kind of a placeholder here, and I'll come up with some language, Greg.
Yeah.
Okay, number three, the applicant should provide the zoning enforcement officer, police department, fire department, and department of public works with a list of contact persons within their respective entities whom enforcement issues may be addressed. Uh, for the appearance of the project shall be as shown on the final site plan in the final architectural drawings. Uh, number five, prior to applying for building permit, the applicant shall submit a complete set of building plans to the board for review and confirmation of compliance with this decision. Plans submitted to the board should with the same plans and details submitted to the building inspector for issuance of a building permit. Purpose of this submittal is for the board to confirm that the building permit. Plans are the same as the final site plan in the final architectural drawings. Again, standard, pretty standard. Number six, the mockup panel, the applicant should provide a mockup panel at the site displaying. Sample materials including exterior finishes, window frames, colors, stone, and grout for review and confirmation by the board that the materials are consistent. The final site plan and the final architectural drawings, the mockup panel shall be completed. By the time the foundation is backfilled and before any of the items required to be on the mockup panel are put in the building.
Yeah.
Kind of fine tune the language on that from, um. Past issues. Seven, the applicants should comply with all aspects and contents of the operation and maintenance plan. Uh, number eight, in the event of, in in the event any conflicts exist between this decision, the final site plan and the final architectural drawings, the plan shall control. Um, the applicant should provide the infrastructure improvements as shown on the final. Site plan, if allowed to do so by the appropriate town of Wakefield officials and board, and shall be responsible for the cost of the same, so that, for example, will be the sidewalk work. I actually. Suggest that that this should be another number. Um. So it should be like that to kind of highlight that. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
I think it makes sense, Brian, especially because it's, you know, if allowed to do so.
Yeah, I just don't want it to be.
Yeah.
Lost in the bottom of that other paragraph.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, number ten, prior to the issue of of the of the building permit, the applicant shall execute and deliver. An easement to the town of Wakefield in a form and content reasonably satisfactory to town council. And the Wakefield Town Engineer to provide access to the rear of. Should be, uh, the rear of, oh, the rear of property owned by. The town of Wakefield, known to number it as nine Albion Street, Wakefield, Massachusetts, the easement area is approximately three by. Three point two by four point three. And is shown on the town of Wakefield easement detail on sheet C two of the site plan.
Brian, this, that was gonna be my only other comment, looks like it's actually cleaned out, there might be a different draft than you sent last week was. Um, you had written like there. Legal counsel or something, and it wasn't clear, so here.
No, that's, that's on ten, Greg, I'm gonna, cuz this is so.
Oh, change numbers, okay.
Yeah, ten deals with the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light, so. Cuz they don't utilize town council, they have their own council.
Yeah, but instead of there, just. Use the, um, defined term WMGLD, so it's not. Ambiguous whether it's. You as.
Point, I'll take it. Got it. So number eleven deals with prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall execute and deliver an easement to the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department, WMGLD. In a form and content reasonably satisfactory to. WMGLD legal counsel to provide electrical service to the property. And to also provide electrical service to any other properties that are serviced by WMGLD. The easement area is shown, and we reference it again. So that's to make sure that electric continues to be provided by all to all the buildings on Albion Street and Main Street. That are, that utilize this property to get their power. Um, number twelve, during construction, onsite parking will be restricted to specific person personnel and designated areas on site, will be relocated or eliminated. Uh, at the sole discretion direction of this project superintendent, no other onsite parking is allowed, during construction, parking is not allowed. On any of the surrounding neighborhood streets, violates will be towed at the owners and contractors' expense without notice, so. They're gonna have to figure out how to get people there, I I think the purpose of this is. You don't want all downtown parking and parking along Albion Street and stuff taken up by contractors.
Yeah, uh, Brian. I'm sure they don't have a GC yet, but. You know, if, has the owner started talking to anybody in the neighborhood that's got property where he can park people?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
Might be able to work with the folks next door.
Okay.
Number thirteen, I'm I'm, if it's okay, I'm not gonna read it verbatim, this is standard now, a lot of it's driven by our bylaw. And in the key to this is, uh, is really the opening part, the opening sentences, which says the multifamily development shall be limited. To a maximum of twenty dwelling units comprised of four one bedroom dwelling units and sixteen two bedroom. Two of the two bedroom dwelling units shall be affordable. And two of the one bedroom dwelling units shall be affordable. So that that meets the eighteen percent requirement of the town. And then all this other language is standard now, you might notice that, uh, DHCD has now become EOHLC, they're now called. Um. And I gotta, I didn't do this here, I gotta change this language. Put the correct name. Just made a note to do that. They've changed your name. Something like. Um. Office of Housing in Livable Communities. Then obviously this thirteen deals with a regulatory agreement. Um. I'll read number the, well, that's now fourteen. Yeah, they just changed. This is the sequencing. Number sixteen deals with signage for the project, has not been approved by the board, you're retaining jurisdiction on that. Number seventeen, uh, prior to the issuance of a building permit, applicants will pay to the town of Wakefield infiltration inflow fee to compensate removal. Of of a four to one ratio for additional flow added to the sewer system. Um. The fee is four hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, per one hundred gallons per day of additional flow, the applicant's engineer should provide existing proposed water demand calculations for review and approval by the town engineer to determine the amount of the fee. What that means is we get credit. For what the bank was putting into the system. Um, versus it being raw land. This was one of the conditions that the town engineer wanted. Number eighteen, I always kind of put this in just as a placeholder for the board to remind you of things that you talk about with projects. So, you know, sometimes you want delivery hour restrictions on construction. Um, you know, a lot of time that is school driven with drop off and pickup. I didn't know if it was something that the board wanted to discuss in condition, so I I just put it as a placeholder.
Any thoughts from the board?
Yeah, I I think where it's. Downtown. We should really think about. You know, the activity, we often do this with deliveries to restaurants, well. You know, deliveries to a construction site, we don't often do much new construction downtown. Uh, and although this isn't school driven. I think it should, you know, be morning hours and that downtown becomes pretty have. Pretty, um. Active after like two o'clock. So I don't think there should be any deliveries of materials to the site. After two P M.
Does it make sense to have them, so if they have to do something for the DPW for sequencing plan and number nineteen, that it be. Sort of incorporated into that and they have to come back and, it's kind of like we did with, um. The.
CCNF?
CCNF. So it all flows together, it's not taking piecemeal?
No, I I like that, Greg, cuz. You know, we can look the town departments way in on whether they. If they're thinking about something or not.
So are you guys saying that that? They have a construction meeting with fire, police. And DPW, and they come up with the delivery times or not times?
Or at least so if the, well, we haven't talked about it yet, but the next. Uh, condition here, Brian, is something about, and I'm. Sure DPW wanted their construction sequencing plan for the reasonable access to the rear of the property, that would sort of jive with. You know, when deliveries can come and can't come, so I would think it would be sort of all compensating, whether they have a meeting, I don't, I don't think it's. That large of a project that they would need a meeting, but maybe a quick call or email to. Fire, police, whoever else state, the other stakeholders would be. And then it's all, you know, sort of buttoned up in one area. Maybe not, maybe I'm overthinking it, uh, just just a thought.
I I think those are two distinctly different things, in my opinion. Access for.
No, I I agree, but instead of just, I guess what I'm trying to say is. Instead of just guessing here. The people who are gonna be dealing with it are the people they're gonna be talking to. You know, DPW and and police, fire anyways, why not let them weigh in on it and and decide?
So Greg, you think that that, like, I'm just going back to CCNF and. I think what we did there is we required a construction management plan. Um, and that that might be what you're contemplating here, and so require that for eighteen, and as part of that, deliveries would be part of it?
On a lot, and maybe not even a construction management, like, cuz it's not that large of a scale, just the fact that it is down. On a lot, uh, maybe not even a construction management, like, cause it's not that large of a scale. Just the fact that it is downtown, I'm cognizant of. You know, it's not myself, Tom, Chip, whoever else that is gonna be dealing with it. It is downtown and, you know, police may have. An idea of when they want deliveries. Uh, maybe what we're thinking, but.
How about if we just put um, the applicant should comply with any, any requirements of um. Town officials as it relates to uh, deliveries of construction material on, on the site.
But that would mean that the town would have to have thought about that.
We always, we, we would go, we always go to them. We're gonna go to them on a project like this. We're gonna.
Maybe there's an in-between Brian, where to Chip's point, we can compel. The owner and G C is part of the building filing for a building permit. To, to um. To work with police, fire and DPW etcetera. To establish delivery timeframes.
I mean, there's already a requirement to semi-talk to them to give them contact information. Why not in there just throw in, hey? Even if you suggest here, there are delivery times, any problem with that?
I, I.
I just think downtown, it's, it's not, I, my thing is with downtown especially, you know, we're not gonna be the ones dealing with it. I understand what you're saying, Chip, but just sort of throwing out a. I think two o'clock is what we want. Well, we're not. We're not down there at two. Uh, maybe, maybe they want it at between six and seven A M. How do we know?
Because I think we're actually thinking about it and I don't think these other groups do.
I think.
Well, I think.
I don't, I don't understand why we can't ask them to.
Forum. Or a way that they actually contemplate it and then we find out about it. I mean.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying.
I with it. So if it's a, you know, a lot of towns do have. For any site, I mean, this is a big project for downtown. We're talking about taking. An empty lot and building a building on it. We made. We made a. Lot and do it down at the intersection. They had to meet with police and fire and come up with standards on deliveries. Now that had more of a school impact. Um, so I, I don't have a problem with. But I would wanna force the hand to make sure that it happened.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I think you're going in the direction I was contemplating anyways. I think that's. The only reason I was even scaling it back is because you just threw out a time. You know, meeting with them, I think, I think would be. You know, it's easy to do, so.
Brian thought?
Um, you know, we're open to what you require. Um. I, I think, I think I can go, I can. You know, I think we get one more meeting on this, so I can go back and kind of look at what the lot and condition was and other conditions that you've had on this and come up with something.
Yeah, I mean, C C and F had a big.
The Tonno Building basically had.
I just think we need to be real cognizant of. How disruptive this could be to downtown.
No, I agree, cause I think it's gonna involve closing Chestnut Street at times and.
And what we, and what did we do with Harvard Mills, you know, that, that had. That was all based on what the police said had to have happen. So we can put anything we want, and I think it's up to Greg's point. At some point, they said it really doesn't matter what Z B zoning board said. You know, word, you can't do what. You need to do, shut the, shut the street. So, your point, Greg. Be that it should have.
At least that went in the down the direct that led to the more conservative direction of safety, which is sort of what we're getting at, but yeah.
The, 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 the goal is, is that the appropriate town officials are gonna have some say on, on. What transpires during construction and deliveries, et cetera.
Correct, and I think that needs to be in our condition.
Yeah, so I've got. I will come up with some language on that for the board's consideration. I'm gonna go back to prior decisions and, 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 and see what we did. And if we didn't do it, I'll do it anyways. I mean, I'll figure it out. Is that acceptable?
I think so. Unless someone has, you know, is the board okay with that?
Yeah, as long as we know what's happening before we vote on it.
You'll see it at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's great. In my opinion.
Go ahead, Jim.
Can I add something?
Yeah, please do.
Hello.
Is he freezing or am I freezing?
No, it's Jim. We're having trouble. At least I'm having trouble picking up anything you're saying.
Myself as well.
Yeah, I know. My internet is. Terrible.
You're back.
Hold on for a minute.
The bad I T night.
Yeah.
You wanna try it now, Jim?
Tom, I just said something that on the my screen that said Jim McBane left.
Okay.
But he may be trying to come back in.
All right. Brian, why don't we keep going? We'll legit, we'll circle back to whatever Jim um, wants to say.
Yeah, that's fine. So, uh. So the, you know, so I'll work on that and, you know, per Jim might have something to it, but nineteen. Uh, prior to commencing construction, the applicant should provide the department of public works a construction, construction sequencing plan. That provides and maintains reasonable access to the rear of. Uh, property owned by the town of Wakefield, known as nine Albion Street, Wakefield. They just wanna make sure that they're gonna be able to get to the back of that building on a continual basis, and we've talked to them about that, and that's a condition. That was, that was requested after I submitted this on Friday. Um, so. I added that in. And um, and that is on the memo that you received tonight. And I think there's probably maybe uh, Mr. Chair, one or two more that were there tonight that need to be added on. Um, that I will, I will, I will do for next meeting.
Yeah, they're pretty straightforward, so I think they'll be able, if they, uh, folks read the memo, they'll see them. And then, uh, if you have any questions or comments when Brian comes back next week with them, we can address them.
So am I, can everybody hear me again?
Yeah, you're back.
Okay, so um. Ken, Greg, have you still got those drawings up?
Yeah, hold on.
Can you pull up drawings?
The architectural, right?
Yeah, pull up three oh three and three oh two.
Is it in this set? Oh, there we go, it's the three hundreds. Did you say three oh two?
Uh, yeah, pull up one more. Three, okay, oh, stop there. Okay. So let me point out something to everybody. Which we haven't addressed. And has been before us. In every meeting. Where we've had this rendering. There are three street trees. And there are five. Um, areas where there's planting basically. In each one of the arches going along the front of the building. And there is no plan showing these. In the building, nor is there any comment upon them, but every elevation, every rendering. Uh, basically shows three trees out front. And these little bays that are inside the, the front wall. On the first floor that have. Some sort of planting and there are five. Different openings basically with their planting. And we have not discussed any of this. And maybe it's a little late to talk about it, but it's certainly, I think, something that needs to be work, uh, worked out. Um, or at least put in. What we're talking right now that this will be dealt with. Um. Later on or whatever, basically. Or we can talk about what they should be now. Of course, street trees are sort of driven a little bit by the town. On the other hand, that doesn't mean the town has to do the work. It just means that the selection of the street trees would be their priority. But the planting. In each one of these little openings. Certainly needs some discussion as to what they are, how they're taken care of and, and I assume some sort of drip system to make sure they continue to. To um. Go forward. And as far as the trees planting, there probably needs to be a grate, grate there. And if you look at um. They actually keep a, a grass strip. Along here as part of this project, so. Um, I think we need to sort of. Have a discussion about this somewhere along the line. It seems like. Even though now is late, I think it's still not over.
So, good point, Jim. Good catch. I think, and I'm just off the top of my head here, we might. Now, if we could get. Some sort of planning schedule, even if it's a basic one and have. Uh, something put in the O and M plan for the five bays of planting. We might be able to cover that there. Uh, in terms of the street trees, I, we'd have to see the dimension. Is there enough room there and? To plant these trees and make those. Sidewalks meet all the accessibility requirements. And if there is, do we wanna compel the project to plant the trees and then? Even install irrigation in there to make sure. That, you know. There's a chance of success for those for the first several years.
There are, there are, there are several new trees up the street. That exist at this point. Um. And uh, as to the trees fitting in there or not. It's a matter of, in some ways, it's a matter of what the species is, that it grows more vertical than horizontal.
Hmm.
So, and it would be nice. Cause that end of the street is kind of dead a little bit. There's nothing really crosses street until you get further up. Where it becomes a little more residential and. In nature. And I, I'd like to see, you know, something put in there. That gives more character to the space as a continuation. Of the residential end of this, of this uh, street.
I agree with that. Any other comments from board members?
Y- yeah, I, I think it's really easy to do and to have Brian. Put something together for it. I mean, I, I have opinions, but you know, a little leaf linden is a typical street tree that we've used in town. Dennis Fazio probably has. What he would like to see. I think it's a quick, I think it could be dealt with in a. O and M and uh. O and M and, and uh, and a uh.
Condition, yeah.
And a condition. Sorry, thank you. Um, as compared to a whole landscape plan.
Yeah.
Um, so I think I. I think maybe a, a quick question, you know, I'd look at the site plan. And what we talked about for sidewalks. And widths and all that and make sure that there's room and then run it by Dennis to see what he wants. Uh, but the grates and, and openings are whatever the town standard is.
But I'd add, I'd add also. Chip, as to what we do in those openings that look like they have some sort of lily or something like that. As far as.
Right, right.
You know, that there's a, is either a box or something that, that holds it or it's built into the wall. Um, and it has a drip system, anything to make it grow better.
Yeah, but I, to. I agree, Jim, but I think we can do it through a condition as.
Oh, I don't, I don't disagree. I, I don't see, you know, full blown landscape plan. Yeah, no.
Right.
You know why those sidewalks are? Thinking they're five feet, they have to be, so.
Yeah, I think too.
Right, I'm thinking, I, I don't know that we're gonna have room for trees, to be honest with.
I mean, all, all. Uh, this, this point is. A good point, well taken. I think what I need to do is um. Is send an email and, and Jim, I'm happy to include you as one board member on it, if the board wants to, to. To my engineer and the town engineer tomorrow to, to let them know that this issue has been brought up for them to both look. At. The feasibility of, of putting street trees in there because the town engineer always has an opinion on this. And um, and then um. Uh, make sure, you know, have them, have them um. Work with, with uh, Jim and I to make sure that uh, it's gonna work and how it's gonna work and at least. That way, if it's problematic, your board will have one board member who's tuned in to what the responses are from the town engineer and our engineer. Jim, we, we did this, Jim, we worked together on this with C V S going way back, if you remember.
Yeah.
As well as with um, Santander.
With Santander too, I work with Jim, so you know, we, we, we kind of know the routine with the town engineer on this, so.
I mean, they may, for all we know.
And I'm happy to run with the ball and. With, with Mr. McBane if the board authorizes that.
For all we know, there could be conduit under there for street light, cause there is a street light there that's not shown.
Okay, are folks fine with that?
Yep.
We usually, we usually find a way to make it work because they add to the property.
Okay, why don't we proceed with that way, Brian?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Good catch.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. I mean, I think, I think um, I'm hoping that we can have this at a position to uh, to vote on at the next meeting. That's, that's my goal.
Yeah, in my opinion, I think we're ready to move forward on this. All right, with that, um, any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I'll throw it open to the public. Are there any members of the public? Who would like to ask a question or comment on this material that was presented tonight? If so, please use the raise your hand function on Zoom. Hearing and seeing none. I'll close to public comments.
I move, Mr. Chairman, that we can. Continue this to, I believe, September twenty seventh is our next hearing.
It is.
To September twenty seventh, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Okay, regular voting members and Greg, if there's no discussion. Hearing done, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So it's continued to the twenty seventh. Brian, if you can get that with materials and the work with Jim done before then, uh, that would be good.
Well, I will do that. Thank you very much.
Okay, next matter before us is cases twenty three thirty nine, twenty three forty, twenty three forty one. And twenty three forty two, New Creek LLC located at ten Broadway.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, attorney Brian McGreal representing New Creek LLC regarding ten Broadway. Um. We're um, uh, as you know, we're trying to finalize matters on this project as well. I think it's getting close. And hopefully, uh, we, we wanna try to be in a position to close this out at the next meeting if we can work through all the, all the final matters. Um, and um, I have my uh, my support team on this project with me tonight. I don't think they're all going to. Uh, present, but I just wanted them all here in case any questions come up. So with that said, uh, John Ober from Hayes Engineering is here, our site civil engineer. Uh, Donnie Lowe is here on behalf of the ownership group. Um, we have um. Uh, a architectural team of Chris, uh, Chris um, Santoro and Brian O'Conner from Cube Three. And uh, lastly, Jim Emanuel is here as our landscape architect. Um, and, and again, I don't think there'd be a lot of presentation from everybody here, but just to be able to um, answer questions that, that might arise. Um, as far as updates go, Conservation has closed a hearing on this. Uh, John Ober and handle that. And we're expecting an order of conditions to be issued uh, by the Conservation Commission at the, at their next meeting. Uh, but uh, we're pretty much done there. Um, as with the last project, uh, you would receive uh, the T A C memo and on that project, you also received the DPW memo. Uh, back just before the August sixteenth meeting and I think we went over the fire department issued a memo. Uh, in regards to the balcony, so, so all departments have signed off. Um, and the DPW memo references, all of their conditions have been. Um, and the D P W memo references, all of their conditions have been addressed. Uh, and I've worked with the town engineer on that to make sure, as, as with the last project, so. Um, happy to um, to go through those. It's up to you, Mr. Chair, how you want to proceed on that.
Yeah, uh, I pleasure the board. If you recall, we received both the T, T A C memo and the D P W memo, as Brian referenced, the day of the hearing. So, we've had him for a month. Um, if folks have questions or comments, uh, we should go through them. Uh, maybe on the T A C memo, Brian, where uh, traffic has come up quite a bit, maybe you could just. Quickly pull that up and walk us through that, um, so folks get a full understanding of that and can comment or question.
Well, I'll tell you what, it could be adventurous me trying to pull that up. I'll try. Still not open it, I'm having a pee, uh, so maybe, uh, Greg, could you help me with that? That was on your email from um.
Good, good thing you have your full support team with you, though, as you said.
You're my support team on that.
I'm gonna have to find it. If any of your guys do have it, I gotta take a look.
So, it's an email that you would receive Friday afternoon.
Oh, it's back in that email. Okay, it's not in the one from, well.
Yeah.
Hold on. You want the T A C response memo, not the V H B one?
Yes. Oh, no, uh, I want the uh, V H B memo, Greg.
Mr. Chairman, while they're doing that, as far as the engineering one, as long as all the. Issues that they came up with and thoughts that they wanted included have been included in the plans and drawings. And the D P W has now signed off on it. Um, I'm fine without going through it step by step.
No, I agree. All that stuff was uh, pretty straightforward stuff, so. But I know we get a lot of questions and testimony on traffic, so, but this was worthy of some uh, time.
Right. So, would you like me to read it or you just want to read it on your own as it's on the screen?
Just take us through the highlights, Brian.
Okay. Um, so basically this references the T A C meeting. Um, the, the summary includes primary comments and the T A C resolution, so comment one, site distance. So, at the T A C meeting, uh, V H B noted that. Based on the desktop review, the sight lines looking north appear to be obstructed by a monument sign of the Lee brothers as well as some mature shrubs. Um, V A I, who was our consultant. Uh, Vaness conducted a field investigation, confirmed that these obstructions limit the sight lines in this direction. However, we also noted that they're located entirely on private property outside the control of us in the town. So, T A C's recommendation is represented to the town, approach the owner of that property, request the overgrown shrubs to be trimmed back. In the interest of public safety, so I know that's happening. Um, two, uh, traffic signalization optimization at the intersection of North Avenue Main Street. Uh, V H B, that's the town peer review consultant. Noted that based on the capacity analysis for the intersection of North Avenue Main Street, vehicle queues on North Avenue Eastbound typically extend beyond Broadway. At the request of T A C, that's our consultant, provided supplemental analysis. Including signal timing adjustments, the revised analysis show a modest improvement to the North Avenue Eastbound queues. Should be noted that the town is currently pursuing a traffic signal improvement project in coordination with Masso D O T. That includes this intersection and several other nearby signals. The schedule of this project has not been finalized at this time. Um, Vanessa, that's our consultant's analysis, demonstrated that minor improvements could be achieved as an interim measure if needed. So, uh, the proponents agreed to provide a contribution of fifty thousand dollars that could be used towards signal optimization at the discretion of the town. Uh, and three, potential widening of Broadway to provide exclusive left-hand turn. Wakefield Police Department asked about the possibility of lying left turns from Broadway to North Ave. And explore the possibility of signalizing the intersection. Part of the response comments, that's our consultant, we, we spent the money to provide a conceptual layout plan showing this left turn on Broadway. Based on the concept plan, the widening could result in impacts to private property in both corners. More detailed design would be required to determine the feasibility. Uh, it should be noted that the intersection Broadway North Ave would be part of D O C, D O T signal project. And a portion of the monetary con- contribution will go to this also, to that left-hand turn, which subsequently in meetings, we've. Determine we believe it can happen. Um, and this was on the uh, parking requirements prior to the T A C meetings, E B A commented on the density. Of the project and the parking requirements need to be met. Since that time, the opponents agreed to reduce the building from one twenty-four units to one oh six. Which will reduce traffic generation as well as parking needs. The pro- proponents should confirm the final unit count and that the parking supply meets zoning. In addition, there was discussion at the T A C meeting regarding site access. The proponents should confirm that at least the site plan restricts easily side drive on Broadway as a right turn egress only. Uh, the T A C did not require any information. As far as that egress goes. That was comments by the, the last sentence, that was comments on the town engineer memo. And our site plan has been addressed, has been, I should say, altered and changed to address those concerns on the um. On the restrictions, so they've been all mocked out on the site plan. The town engineer signed off on that.
And since it's in that comment, Brian, that's, they say, should confirm the final unit count, that the parking supply meets zoning requirements, just. Quickly remind us what the, where we are in that.
We do meet it.
Yeah, just make, yeah, just since it's in there.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, we also submitted, um, as part of the submittals on Friday, um, one of, I'm kind of gonna go through the punch list that the board gave us. At the last meeting to, to um, to talk about how things have been addressed. There was a bunch of items that the board wanted uh, updated or revised. And, you know, we did our homework. That's why the submittal to you on Friday for this project was pretty voluminous. I think there were, there were ten or twelve attachments that went with it. Um, and one of those was an updated landscape plan. Um, and um, what Mr. Todd all wanted, he wanted every plant specified because Jim Emanuel talked about different possible ivies and. Different things and, and so now everything has been exactly specified. On what type of ivy it will be, what type of plants. And what type of trees and uh, that they'll all be irrigated. That's noted on the plan. Uh, as part of that, we also submitted paver specifications on Friday. Specifying, specifying the paver materials on some of the outdoor gathering areas that we, we've put on the plans. So, um, we're happy to bring that plan up and have Jim go through it. It's up to the board if you need to see that or not.
Pleasure of the board on that.
I reviewed it. It meets my hope that we were specific so that there's not a lot left to question when it gets built. There's nothing left to question, excuse me, not even, not a lot.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? No, I think, I think we're covered there, Brian.
Okay, um, the next was, we did some updates on the site plan and John, uh, John Ogren, you're here, correct? Hiding in the weeds. John, could you bring up the site plan?
I can.
Because I can't. And I'm just gonna kind of go through these and then, and then we have it on the screen and, and John might be able to point a couple of things out as I go, some of the, some of the more. Relevant items. Uh, there were requests on the site plan and. John's um, revision that we sent in on Friday also included some. Final request for the town engineer, which is now the, a lot of, some of the comments on his memo that he had sent, comment addressed, John, John revises to make him. Make everything in sync. Um, we've included some electrical vehicle parking spots, uh, as requested by the board. John, could you um? So, we've got sixteen E V parking spaces. Um, as we talk about the parking later, these do not need to be specific for E V space, uh, for E V vehicles. But they're available because um, at the end of the day, um, they, they would be allowed to accommodate other vehicles that are not E V. So, they don't affect our parking count, but it makes charging stations available for the site. Um, so we've added that. Um, we've also have designated visitor parking, um. The board wanted us to do that. We've designated these eight spaces out front as visitor parking spaces. Um. And we're gonna talk about parking a little bit, I think, when we get into the draft decisions, cause that was a concern, so I'm not ignoring that issue that came up before the board, but, we know, we will get to it as part of our presentation. Uh, John updated the photometric plan. Jim Emanuel has confirmed that all of the fixtures that we're proposing are Doc Sky compliant. Um, so that has all been updated. We also provided the spec sheets on those um. Lights as part of our submittal on Friday. Um, and lastly, um, and we'll get into this a little bit when we're talking about parking. We're, we're proposing a gate system on the parking lot. John, could you kind of show that, where that would be? So, it's a gate on that, that residents will have access to with their vehicles and with their iPhones and. And through the units that they'll be, be able to open that. And again, we're gonna talk a little bit about how we. We think that parking will work here, um, as we go on, but I just wanted to. Highlight that gate because that might come up as a discussion as we go forward on that. So, that's an update. Um, and, and really the reason on that is our thought is that, you know, we are relatively close to the train, you know, people look to dump their cars to run and hop on the train. So, we really, you know, want to protect this lot for uh, use of our property. So, those are the updates on the um.
Actually, Brian, before you leave the site plan.
Yep.
I thought I saw a note where the curbing is concrete curbing. Where traditionally, that's been the practice of this board to require granite curbing.
I'll let John take that one.
Where do you see um, concrete curving?
It was on one of the site plans I looked at over the weekend, John. There's a note, there's an abbreviation, C C, concrete curbing.
Should be V G, V G C.
Yeah, I, it, it may be that it's on the legend, um, but there's. The layout.
I got it from the legend, yeah. So, I just wanted to be sure, John.
Yeah, this, this layout plan shows uh, V G C, V G C. Um. It's all labeled V G C.
Okay.
Is that on the legend, John?
Maybe pull it off the legend.
Yeah, I think it, it's, it's in the legend, but. No, it's all vertical granite curb.
Okay, thank you.
Great, can I um? Move on, Mr. Chair, is that okay?
Yeah, you want any other questions or comments?
On the site plan?
I think we're good.
Okay, great. So, now I'm gonna move on to architectural and um, either Brian or Chris, if you could bring those plans up. That we submitted that you gave me?
Yeah, I can share.
Just to have them. And, you know, I don't think we need to point out every item, but I wanna. Maybe reference a few things. Great, so these, these have been, um, these have been um, updated. Um, and, you know, and what we've done, I guess I, if you go trick, that's perfect. So, um, what you'll see in this sheet, we all, we made a note, was discussed on the garage lighting, so the garage lighting in this project, we have motion sensors, except. For emergency lighting or letting, or required to be always on for safety purposes. So, that was a comment that, you know, the board wanted on the plan. Um, and I think now that's uh, that's accomplished. Um, we've also, uh, we had options on prior plans for the entry. The board had selected option one, so now the, the plans have been um. Kind of revised to only include option one on the entry on the plans that you received on Friday. Um, there was a question on the, on what was gonna be the system on the balconies, if it was gonna be glass or mesh. And now, uh, that has been clearly designated uh, on the plans is, is the, there's option one on the, on the um. On the entry. And Chris, could you go to the mesh system on the balconies? So, we're clearly showing that it's a mesh system on the balconies.
Just gonna kind of circle a couple of views here, but it's the mesh everywhere, the mesh everywhere.
Yeah. And then we've also, uh, we've updated and, and provided more detail on the material sheet. Chris, could you go to that?
Yep.
And you can see the metal mesh on the screening there too. And I think, I think most importantly on the architectural plans, uh, not that it's not all in point, but there was. Really wanted to see um, um, a roof plan, uh, and Chris, could you go to that? And you also were concerned about venting and how we were gonna do it, so. What Chris has shown here is the field for the H V A Cs that are clearly in the middle of the building, will not have any site impact. Uh, and then we also have the note, uh, unit venting, all venting is to be through the roof of the building. So, we, we don't have a need for any uh, penetrations on the outside walls, and that's committed uh, on the plans. Um, we also, the board had asked that we show the um, elevator override and build above. Chris, could you blow that up?
So, we're, we're showing it in section here, but it's actually in the model as well. So, in all the views that we were looking at earlier, it's actually in the model. You just don't see it from those views.
But you did want it reflected.
Yep. So, it's, it's in our roof plan, it's, it's in the, it's in the model, it's in our section here to show how tall it is above the roof.
And those are the, those are the uh, highlights of the updated architectural plans.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Are you um, you're proposing gate for the open outside parking area, but not the gate for the. Uh, below building garage area?
Well, proposing a gate on the parking, um, Chris or, or Brian, could you, and so I think um, you're asking. Consumer if there's gonna be a gate, a door on the garage itself.
Right, below, below the building one.
Yeah, so, um, Chris or Brian, have you determined that at this point?
Yeah, typically, we would put a, a, like a, most of the time, I would say it's a high speed door on the garage.
So, the answer is yes, there will be a garage door.
Okay, so that one is part of the, um, that's a permanent. And you're just proposing additional one for the outside parking area.
Correct. Just to get into the parking field itself in the garage, yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, real quick, uh, Brian, on the E V parking, um, is there gonna be like? A charging station like every four spots, or is it just like an area just for electric cars? Like, it seems like a lot of spots, are you gonna have a lot of charging spots?
No.
A lot of spaces.
Uh, so you, are you saying, Joe, are they gonna install them all to start? Um.
Well, I think it just seems normally like they just have like two or, two or four or something like that. You have like eight.
We got, I think we got sixteen.
Sixteen, so you're gonna have, is every, every space gonna be able to connect to a charger, or are you just gonna have a space? For an electric vehicle but not be able to charge?
No, I think, Donnie, I think it's that every, every space would have access to a charger, cause a lot of the chargers, I think, have, you know, shared, they, they handle two spaces.
Yeah, so you're gonna have eight, sixteen spaces with eight chargers, so, something like that.
Is that right, Don?
Yeah, part of the stretch code, really, they're pushing for a lot more E Vs. So, it's either um, E V ready. Or, or, or has an E V unit in it, so, um, we, we plan to do all sixteen.
And then you, you said that you're gonna allow non-electric vehicles to park there, is that gonna be some kind of bike? You see?
No, we're gonna, I, I think we've got a pretty good idea on parking for this project that we're gonna talk about that will. Kind of address that.
Alright.
So, we'll, if, if I, if it's okay with you, uh, Joe, if, if we can table that, is a, is a.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? All right, Brian, why don't we move to the parking discussion?
Yeah, so I get, I get, uh, well, can, can we, um, yeah, maybe I'll table O N M in the conditions, Mr. Chair, and we can talk a little about parking now, probably appropriate.
Yep.
Great, okay, I, thank you. So, um, at the last meeting on the parking. You know, what came up was, uh, the question was asked to uh, my client, he planned on my parking spaces. And I obviously have a very honest client because he said, yes, I do. And, and that created a little bit of a stir and, and I think some concern with the board. Um, so, um, so the board asked us to look at that and, you know, on, on the impact, so. And maybe, you know, look at other projects. So, we, we did have an opportunity to do that. Um, we, you know, I posed a question to other clients who have done buildings like this and, and indoor have been permitted to do other buildings, what their. What their procedure is and, and the comment, comment back that I got was that. That um in their experiences, um they intend to charge for parking in. Most of the top end um rental buildings inside of four ninety-five charge for parking. Um is an extra from rent um and um in in that's somewhat the norm, so. Uh in Wakefield, for example, Harvard Mills charges for parking. Um in Everly Apartments down um at uh Otterstone Road charges for parking. You know, those are two rental buildings. I looked at the one on North Ave. They provide a service, uh those buildings provide, it says provide one surface space and then anything beyond one space, they charge for a space. So you'll you'll you will struggle to find any project that's a rental project that just says, hey, there's open parking, you know, period. Um it's there's not a lot out there. Um this board is really never conditioned anything on um. On, you know, basically you can't rent parking or, you know, uh anything of that sort, so um so I think it just happens now. I'm not going to be hypocritical because I've always said that every project stands on its own and there's no precedent, and that's true. Um so, you know, the board certainly, you know, acknowledge has the right to do whatever they want with this project. Um and and, you know, maybe view this different than other projects, but I just didn't want to, you know, talk about what. Has happened uh in the past and in, you know, for your consideration amongst yourselves. Um and but in any event, um our goal is to address any concerns that the board has for parking. Um I talked to my clients over the past few weeks on this. This is a, this is, it has been a great project. Um it's been a a great review process. We want to end this on a positive note and we want to make sure that um. That your concerns are are addressed and we'll do what we need to do to make that happen. And, you know, I would expect it uh that we'll be able to do that before the end of the day. So with that said, our thoughts on the parking, i- i- you know, we've we've kind of really vetted this. Is that um. We've got a hundred and six units. And out of those units, we have sixty-four one bedrooms and we've got forty-two two bedrooms. Um some of the one bedrooms are studios, so we we call them all one bedrooms um for purposes of discussion, so we've got sixty-four one bedrooms. Forty-two two bedrooms. We have a hundred and fifty-nine parking spaces, of which eight of them are visitors. So we have fifty-three parking spaces left over, uh if you if you allocate one parking space for each unit. Um so you say, okay, every 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 unit, you know, has to have a parking space because they're gonna have at least one car. So every park, every every unit, if you say every unit has a parking space. We have fifty-three parking spaces left over. But then we have to subtract the eight visitor parking spaces. So that means if you give every parking space, every unit of parking space, you you have forty-five extra parking spaces. To allocate or play with. So what we're what we're suggesting um. Would would be something that would work and and it and my client's comfortable with it because it's pretty much what they require anyways. Is that um we would have a condition that each unit, you can't rent a unit. Um without a parking space, so meaning that the condition would be that. Each unit shall have a parking space for each vehicle, each vehicle owned, leased, or used. By an occupant of that unit. Any occupant, so that means that if, you know, they're gonna rent to somebody who has two cars. They're gonna say to that person, yeah, you gotta rent spaces and guess what? We can't lease to you unless you rent two parking spaces. Person commits uh that they only have one car in their lease, then they would only have to rent one parking space. Uh but they're gonna be committed to have to rent the number of spaces for the cars that they have. Um this works too because it it will require my client to assign the parking spaces, so there'd be a parking chart. With what spaces are attributed attributable to what units in what cars. Um so um so, you know, the the easy question is, well, how do you enforce that? Well, you enforce that. Because i- it's a condition and we would have to really wordsmith and work it, work on it, which, you know, I I can do. And it will be subject to audit by the building inspector or your board. So, you know, you could you could say anytime, hey, give us your parking plan with the numbers. Show us what units are using what, you know what vehicles they are that they have, so we want to make sure, we want to do a quick audit and walk through the lot and see that. The designated vehicles are in those spaces, because, you know, maybe we're having a problem or something like that. It also gives some flexibility, because I think part of the problem that's happened with projects in the past is that. Um and I think this became a problem up at one point that maybe is is rectified, but up at Wakefield Vista early on. That there wasn't a requirement to rent spaces, they weren't being rented. And then people were parking on the street and visitors and there were empty parking spaces in the lot that weren't being utilized. Um and and, you know, that doesn't work for anybody, so this provides flexibility, because as I mentioned, there's forty-five extra spaces. So at the end of the day, if every car in the unit has a parking space. Because maybe it turns out that there's a lot of one car units. So at the end of the day, if there's extra spaces, let's say the project is completely full. And out of the forty-five extra spaces, only thirty-five are used. The condition would say that those ten extra spaces become visited, more visitor parking spaces for the project. And that can be managed because the way Kimco leases is they, and this is how it works with the electric vehicle spaces. They have a provision that they assign a parking space, but they say to the tenant, they can relocate that parking space whenever they want. So that's why they can allocate regular people to park in the E V spot. But if now they get a tenant that has an E V vehicle, they can go to that tenant. Who was parking there and say, you've got to move, we've got somebody that needs the E V parking space because they have an E V car. What we could do is if we had extra parking spaces, we could clear out. The spaces right near the gate as soon as you come in. And have have signs that could be temporary in nature, because that number of visitor parking spaces could fluctuate back and forth. But they will be labeled visitors. And the unit owners would have the ability to open that gate to allow guests to come in and use those extra spaces, so. What this really um co- accomplishes is it's an organization of the parking field. It documents what's going on. It it it, I think hopefully addresses your concern and it maximizes the use of the parking, it doesn't like uh. A landlord, the owner can't say, oh, well, I didn't rent these ten spaces, so you know what? They're behind the gate, I'm just gonna leave them empty. Um, you know, and they're just never gonna get used, and then, you know, on certain events, there's trickle over on visitors that that, you know, would be a shame to have those spaces not used. So we've put a lot of thought into this, I think it's a it's a pretty good model, um and um I think it works. I I I don't think there's any perfect solution for everybody's concerns. You're never gonna, you know, you you can't, you can't condition or permit or police against people that want to do things that aren't right. But I think um if if somebody's gonna rent an apartment and you're telling them right out, look. You know, tell me how many cars you got, because you gotta rent spaces, because there's nowhere outside of those gates for you to park. Um I think it's gonna be a deterrent to people, they're not, they're not gonna want to, you know, step into you a problem right out of the gate, because there's a lot of places you can rent.
So Brian, um not getting into all of this, but just one comment on the V E V parking spaces. You have to, obviously, parking under the garage is, in this theory. Op idea basically is more expensive than parking outside the garage. So that means for someone that wants, has an uh E V, E V, he has to pay the premium to be in the garage. Since there are no E V stations outside the garage, shouldn't there be some E V stations outside the garage so that? People that don't want to pay the premium to be inside have the opportunity to plug in?
Um, I mean, you know, e- either that or they don't have to rent, I mean, you know, a- again, they're not gonna be forced to. You know, to do that, and I don't know, Donnie, would there be a difference on the garage and? Have you given any thoughts on that issue? Because maybe you're more capable of answering that, maybe you've already thought through on that.
Yeah, Jim's right on, you know, the interior parking is generally a higher rent than outside um. As far as E Vs, uh we we typically like to jet uh. Uh condense them all in one area for for electrical runs uh. But I suppose we could put some outside, I mean, it's, uh it wouldn't be an issue.
You could, I mean, you could put them on the end of the building where there are several parking spaces at the end of the building. Um that are right near the E V end of the of the current scheme you've got. So it's not that far an electrical run, whether it's six units or or eight units, so. Two units, there's at least the opportunity for someone to pay less and still have a plug-in. I assuming there's not a premium for having an E V parking space. Because you're end up paying, they end up paying the bill for the electrical anyway.
That's right, um.
Couldn't you just charge the outside prices if you're trying to encourage E Vs anyways? Don't charge a premium, keep them, I mean, then you're, I don't know if you are, but I think earlier at another meeting, you said you guys are trying to encourage. Sort of practices like that, just charge the outside price for an inside spot. And then you don't have to worry about any of this engine, over engineering things.
Yeah, uh.
If there, if that's really what you're trying to do, I think that's what you said in an earlier meeting, but I may have misunderstood you, I think that was sort of like a corporate.
Um we are a green company, that's right. Um so we do encourage uh, you know, E V use. Uh as far as the location, I I think we're flexible on that, I think.
I think instead of over engineering stuff, just makes sense then encourage it by keeping it inside by charging the outside. Price instead of.
I probably have some E V outside at a lower price than to lose in inside spot. In the in the higher rent, I mean, the the economics of the building really does depend on some of that parking. And uh i- if we if we. Uh categorize some of the E Vs inside at a lower rate, um then the person's getting sort of a bonus. You know, um protected parking spot, inside spot at a lower rate than anyone else.
Yeah, well, that's exactly what I was saying, you said you're a great company incorporating it, that, I mean, you just said what I was trying to get to.
Yeah.
I mean, that's exactly, yeah, so I don't know what the, I mean, it's up to you, I don't really. Care anyways, but if that is your corporate goal to be a great company, seems like that's what you'd want to encourage.
Yeah, uh. I I I think I would probably split some, maybe half and half.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, you okay with that, Jim? That we will put something, we put like half of them outside?
I just bring it up as an i- as what I see as a potential issue, basically. Has nothing to do with what you were previously talking about, it was just more about where are E V stationed and if. If we're to think the future will bring more E Vs. Do you put, you know, do you put them, do you eventually basically put them in the garage? Or is it, are you gonna expand outside and have to put stations out there as well, which is a future thing at this point? Quite frankly, you've got more V E Vs in here than most of the projects we've seen so far.
By far. Yep. Okay, so we'll we'll figure that out, I mean, we can. I think more more likely what we'll probably do is take half of the inside ones and put them outside.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the charging for parking and the uh solution that they?
Yeah, I have a question on practice, how it actually works, so we obviously, we talked about, you kept, I think, Brian, you kept calling them extra spaces. What are we actually at for the ratio, though? Are they really extra or are they, those get us to the one point five?
No, you're at one point five.
Yeah, so there, I guess, yes, they are extra in your scenario, but that's one per unit, right? So there will be some you. Just taking worst case scenario, there'll be some units. In the worst case scenario that have two, if not three, and some of those. Um two units, uh two bedroom units, if it's a couple and a buddy or something like that. What? So we talked about the scenario where, okay, we're rent, we 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 make everyone rent a spot, there's one per unit. We have fifty-three extra, well, what if we get to the the scenario where every spot's rented? Uh every. Parking spot is rented, but we have empty units. Are you envisioning flexibility? That you could just say, yeah, you can rent here, but you 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 have to wait for an open spot?
Yeah, well, I think what it will be is they they would have to manage that, and so, you know, what would happen is, so like if they were full, Greg. And somebody in an apartment left and that apartment only have one parking space with it. So now they're leaving, so it only frees up one parking space, they would not be able to rent to somebody with two vehicles.
Yeah, I guess what I get, what I'm getting at is you went to the best case scenario, I'm getting, maybe taking it to another degree. Every unit's rented, there's still four, every parking spot's rented, there's still four empty units, those four people can't, those four units cannot have cars, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I wasn't sure the way you were 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 saying it.
Yeah.
Was that there were spots attached to, but either way, okay, there's flexibility is what we're saying.
There's flexibility, but you know, bottom line is, every car, every car in that project has to have a rent deposit.
And I'm not convinced that that scenario is gonna happen, but that is what I think. People in town more care about is the worst case scenario rather than the best case.
So if I was, if I was the managing group there, Greg, and I started getting down to like. I would make sure that every apartment had at least one spot available to them.
No, understood, but the language that Brian was saying that's gonna be in there, I wasn't sure the way he described it, it sounded like. It sounded different than what I just said, but the flexibility, yeah, I don't care how they manage it, as long as.
Right.
But, yeah.
They could be. S O I, S O L.
Yeah.
But I would make sure that everybody could at least get one car.
Any other questions or comments on the parking?
I think my comment would be is that, you know, I I think a lot of people, we brought this up because of Vista and some of the others. Um I thought this was a very thoughtful way of doing it and maybe. Even a way that some future projects could work, because I I guess I didn't understand that. Many of the projects that we've approved have been charging for parking. And that it's part of the pro forma that they figure on when they're building these things, so. I think some thoughts went into this, and I appreciate that.
The only other time I thought we took this on was up at Tarot Lane and I can't recall where it ended.
We did and we had a fight over at that town council way in on.
That was a forty B.
Yeah. Yeah, so it ended up not mattering anyways, but he did weigh in on it.
Yeah. Okay. Uh without any more questions or comments on the parking, okay, let's move forward.
Yeah, I just, I would just ask that Brian, uh uh since he's presented this, uh really write it out succinctly. So we have, we can all, you know, we have discussed this a little bit, but I think. We need it written down succinctly as to what's gonna go into this decision. So we clearly understand in this particular case how this works.
I agree, because the condition has to be written in a way. That if there's a problem. You know, the building department is able to enforce the condition.
I'm happy to, instead of worrying about succinctness of brevity, I'm happy to. Look at it, because it, this one.
You got it.
Mechanisms might not be succinct, you know, if if Brian gets it there.
You got it.
Brian's a lot more experienced than I am. Ryan became a lawyer later in life, but.
If I can, if I can have the board's permission to, you know, as I draft this, to run it by Greg.
Yeah, I think that's great, anything that would.
Like that, I'd like to put his eyes on it sooner rather than later, so we can. Maybe.
Just, just the one condition.
Just this one condition, yeah, just just this is one condition. You know, that way, you know, it it it, you know, hopefully having a position that he's comfortable with it coming back to the boards to trying to do that at a meeting.
Works for me if everyone's okay with that.
Yeah, thank you, Greg.
So Greg will review all conditions for all projects going forward. This is what I just heard.
Pretty much, Jim.
I don't know if you're gonna be able to find me then.
Thanks, Greg.
All right, Brian, do you want to um?
Yep.
She had, you had the O N M?
I have the O N M, you know, similar um to. The last project, I'm happy to go through it, but it's. the last project, I'm happy to go through it, but it's pretty, and this, this doesn't have any uh, commercial component or what, it's straight residential, so it's pretty pretty straightforward.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that I think needs to be added, Brian, to the O and M. And it can be done when you're doing your parking stuff is this outside gate. And how that works, cause if you're using inside parking spaces that aren't used for residents to purchase and those become visitor spaces inside or outside of the building, how do people get beyond that gate?
Yeah.
And that's, that's not part of your own M yet, so is that a speaker system, a call up to the unit? I, I don't know, so I think that needs to be included in the O and M.
Yeah, because it might end up being some visitor parking spaces beyond the gate.
Absolutely, if your scenario forty-five become visitors.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. And Don, you envision that with a tell us, you know, basically, uh, you know, that, that when residents have guests show up, they'll be able to open the gate remotely for them.
Yeah, I've done projects where you, you dial the, uh, the tenant's apartment number. You, they basically ring you in like the old systems, but it would be, uh, it would, they would activate, activate the gate, gate would go up, they can come in.
Yeah, that just needs to be in the O and M plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, and honestly, good tracking of this could be a good data point for us for future projects.
Okay, no other questions or comments on the O and M? Hearing none? That was everything in my notes, Brian.
And I just have some draft conditions.
Okay.
I'd like to go through, cause this has a couple of So I'm not gonna reread them, um, because they're all pretty much similar to you know, basically, um, everything is, 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 uh, verbatim on the last project that we went through. This one has the landscaping condition because the other project really doesn't have landscaping. Um, but maybe that will change after our conversations with the town engineer, et cetera, but so this had the, and this has the affordable components that, uh, it's a hundred and six units. Um, so basically it five studio, fifty-nine one bedroom and forty-two two bedroom. So two of the studios are affordable, ten of the one bedroom and seven of the two bedroom. And sequencing, this is, uh, thirteen deals with the.
What, what's the ratio for accessible units?
Oh, how many have to be like, um, handicap accessible, Chip?
Yeah, and are they handicapped accessible or ready to be?
That's a, that's a question for our cube three friends who are here, so.
It's part of the code, is it?
Brian, can you address that?
Yeah, sure, that, that would be in direct coordination with the, with the building code, which would require them to be, um, a- a- available to be adapted.
So they don't have to be done, they just have to be available to be?
Correct.
And what's the percentage? Is it a percentage of each size?
Uh, typically, typically, yeah, typically it's five percent.
Yeah.
And then there's another, um, I, I believe it's two percent that is like hearing impaired. And that's.
We're talking twenty-four, twenty-five units throughout?
Roughly, yes.
And is it like the affordables, they can't all be in one spot, they've gotta be spaced throughout the building?
Yeah, per FHA, we typically make sure we have, you know, um, you know, a variety, you know, from a size standpoint and they're spread around the building, yeah.
And, and as a project, do you do any of them beforehand to be fitted out, or do you wait as that's an as needed basis?
Uh, I mean, the, so the, the five percent is what, what Massachusetts calls group two units, and so well, they have certain design requirements that you need to do at the time of construction and certain other things that are adaptable, so the things that are required to be adaptable, you know, we typically do that way, but you know, some of the other things like, uh, you know, your, your shower and, and your unit will be done at the time of construction.
Kitchen cabinet height, things like that?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thanks, guys.
And Chip, it's really like five or six units, right? Did you say five percent, not twenty-five?
Oh, that's, that, that's correct, it's, 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 it's five percent, yeah.
Oh, okay, so five or six units, yeah. Yeah, my number seemed really large, I was surprised.
Okay, and then, uh, the, the other, uh, conditions irrelevant on this are the fifty thousand dollar contribution is TAC required, which is number thirteen. Um, is requested by the Wayfield Traffic Designary Committee, the applicant shall offer and if accepted, provide a fifteen, fifty thousand dollar contribution to the Wayfield to be used for future traffic signalization opti- optimization at the discretion of the town. Said contribution if accepted should be made prior to issuance of this final C L. Signage is reserved in fourteen and then fifteen. This deals with that plaza area that we talked about, there'll be a gathering place that the applicant shall allow. The plaza area at the corner of Broadway and North Avenue is shown on the landscape plan to be used by residents of the project and the public is a passive, non-recreational gathering space. And then sixteen deals with the I and I contribution for this project, and I made a note on this, I don't know if there's any how you feel about deliveries here, but I foot noted that and then obviously discussion on parking, which we've already had.
Well, on the deliveries, this one, the proximity to the middle school is, is much greater than the last project we talked about. So I think that there needs to be some consideration there on construction deliveries. Any other thoughts from board members?
So Tom, you want me to kind of marry that, uh, is your thought to kind of do the same language that we're gonna do on the other one? To work with town officials, et cetera?
Yeah. Are people okay with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Again, this is a busy, big enough project in a bigger, in a busy intersection near the middle school, I think we need to let police and fire, uh, and, you know, similar to Lawton right across the street. You know, we limited when they could, so I think we need to figure out what the town wants to do and make sure it's a condition that can be kept and honored.
Hey, Brian, real quick, uh, this might be a question for your client, but I noticed that we're not doing construction schedules anymore, which is fine, but do they have an anticipating, uh, anticipated start date and how long a, a project this is, a three year project?
Ronnie?
Uh, approximate start date would be about a year. Uh, so we still have to build, uh, we still have to do construction documents and then go through the permitting process, so we're approximating a year for that, and then the construction probably be about eighteen months.
I only ask because I go to that gym, so I wanna know how much longer I have. Thank you.
At least a year.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, we haven't approved it yet, Joe.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, and that's the, that's what you had to present tonight, Brian?
Yeah, that's what we have, and, um, I think, you know, similar to, um, Main Street, I go, I'd like to work with Greg on that condition and clean things up and hopefully have this in a position to bring in for a closeout at the next meeting if possible.
All right, at this point, I'm gonna open it up to the public, are there any members of the public that would like to speak about what was presented tonight? If so, please use the raise your, raise your hand in the Zoom function. Seeing none, I will close, close it to public comment and bring it back to the board.
Mister Chairman, I move that we continue this hearing to September twenty-seventh, our next board meeting.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Just continue to the twenty-seventh. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, cases twenty-three, forty-three, twenty-three, forty-four, twenty-three, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine and fifty. The Granite's Family Trust LLC. Address at three fourteen, three thirty, three thirty-six Salem Streets.
Great, uh, thank you, Mister Chair, for the record, Attorney Brian McGreal, uh, here on behalf of the applicant Granite's Family Trust LLC. Uh, on the project at three fourteen through three thirty-six Salem Street. Uh, we'll be tonight is Jim Cook, he is a member of the principal entity. Um, and, uh, this, uh, project has been away from the board for quite a while. Um, because, um, last we were before the board, we had, had talked about the fact that there was, um, some drainage, um, stormwater issues um, that neighbors are having in the back of this property, of some folks that live on Unis circle and, uh, on Mitchell Lane. Um, Mister Gill, who was on tonight, is one of those neighbors, I believe he spoke at earlier meetings. Um, and, um, basically, um, it, you know, we've had discussions with the town engineer on this and, and, you know, it's really been confirmed that our project will not worsen the circumstances back there, but this project presents an opportunity to resolve, um, the issues that are occurring back there, um, for stormwater. When this, uh, storm event, some of the, uh, neighbors backyards are, are getting, uh, uh, filled up with water. So the town engineer, um, approached us and he said, hey, you know, this isn't really our problem, but to be a good neighbor, um, you know, uh, would you mind, you know, trying to work with, work with us to try to help the situation back there? And our clients committed to doing that about, uh, two and a half months ago. Uh, is part of the project. Um, and since that time, um, we have, um, went to our engineering firm to the process, Hayes Engineering has worked on this issue, John Ogren is also here tonight. Uh, from Hayes. Uh, cammering has been done on some drainage pipes in the area, um, and the results of those were finally received. And, um, we do think uh, that the end result will be able to provide some help um, to, um, to the situation back there, I think there's gonna be a need for cooperations from, cooperation from other neighbors in the form of maybe giving some easements on their property for piping. Um, but, um, this project, as we said to the town engineer yesterday, and, and Kevin Gill on behalf of the neighborhood uh, participated in that meeting, um, we're willing to provide, uh, some help in the form of continued engineering work, which Hayes Engineering is doing this week at the request of the town engineer to locate some drainage structures. Um, we're committed to, um, to giving an easement on our property that will be needed um, to help the drainage situation. And we're also committed to provide, um, either some, um, uh, financial support or infrastructure support to the situation back there to, to help resolve it. Um, so I'm sure the town engineer will have some input on this as, as, as this project moves forward. Um, we've kind of got, we're, we're continuing to work on that issue to fine tune it. Um, but we, we, and I think that there'll be through the town engineer, some condition that would be suggested of us on that, on those items that I just mentioned to you, that we are, we are open to and we will work with the town engineer on that. Uh, but, um, as we mentioned in our meeting yesterday, and I think everybody recognizes it. Um, we need to, we need to move forward with that in sync now and parallel on other aspects of our project to move this forward, because that's taken some time. Um, and we think we've got that to a point now that there's gonna be some resolution on that with a commitment from us. Um, meaning a resolution that we're, we're going to commit what we can. And then they'll also have to be, we, we're gonna have to leave it there and then hopefully the town can resolve it with other neighbors and other items that they need from neighbors, et cetera. But we're gonna give what, what we can to, to help it on our end. Um, so with that said, um, and I think, I think, um, I think Kevin is here and hopefully he'll confirm, you know, uh, that our cooperation is, as you take public, public input here um, on what transpired, but, um, last we left you on other aspects of this project, we were working with Jim McCain on the architecture. I think we had that to a pretty good point. But there was, um, requests on the board to see what we could do on lowering the building a little bit. Uh, if you recall, there's a wall out front and the board wanted us to look at that. We haven't done that. Um, I wanna kind of regroup with Mister McCain, he is your designated board member on this for architecture, so we're hoping to have a meeting with him, um, before the next meeting, so we can report back to you on that issue and try to drive other aspects of this project forward. So that's where we are, Mister Chair, so that's a summary of what's going on with drainage, and I know you need to hear from the town engineer at the end of the day. Uh, but, um, but we'd like to, um, uh, for the next meeting, Jim, if you're available, um, Andy Zaleski, our architect is, and John is, that maybe we can uh, set up a meeting with you early next week to be in a position to kind of kind of, uh, tell the board where we are on, on the architecture and, and regroup at the next meeting on that.
I have no problem with that. Ken, is, has, um, uh, John got anything he can show us at this point, at least in a general concept of what they're talking about back there?
Um, I can, yeah, I can do, yeah, John, if you can bring up your site plan, we can kind of show you what the issue was.
Yeah.
We can show you what, George, you wanna bring it, can you bring it up and then we can kind of tell the board and Kevin's here too, and we can kind of kind of show what, you know, where the issue is and, and the pipes that we've looked at and some of the stuff that we're, we're thinking about?
But, but you're just thinking about it.
Yeah, but we can tell you what we've done, um, if you want, it's up to you.
I, I, yeah, it's fine, but let's keep it brief, I mean, until you know exactly what you're doing.
I agree with that, it's good to hear an update on what's been happening, but, um, John, if you can, you know, thousand foot level really quick.
Uh, give me one second.
Uh, you just lost your thousand.
Uh, sorry, I know.
Done.
I mean, that's, essentially, it, it deals with uh, flooding not on our property, but off our property and some budding properties, and we were looking at, um, some of the existing drainage and um, Unis circle and, um, Mitchell, uh, as the ways to potentially tie in to the street drainage and be able to convey that and at least, you know, alleviate some of the, the flooding issues that were going on, um.
What, what's happening is, and Kevin's here, what's happening is towards the back of our property um, with some of the backyards on Mitchell, including Kevin's and, and some of the yards, I think Kev on Unis to a certain extent. Um, water comes in off of some of the properties on Salem Street from the rear. And, and the water in essence has nowhere to go, so, so those yards become the detention basin. Um, and they fill up with water. So what our goal has been is to try to find and provide a relief valve um, that we can, can put a pipe there and we can, um, connect it to the town drainage system to relieve that water that's building up in that area, to stop those properties from being the detention basin. And to just have the property flow through into the town drainage system. So what we've done is there was, there were pipes in that area that led to this area that needs relief, so we, but nobody knew where those pipes went, so we had to camera them hoping they were gonna get us there, they didn't get us there, they got us potway there. So, so now what's gonna be needed is, is gonna have to be um, some further study on that, survey work, which Hayes Engineering is doing uh, to find a path to get the pipe there, that's where there might be some cooperation from other neighbors that would be needed to accomplish that, cause it would have to go through the edge of their property. It would have to go through our property, which we're, uh, as I mentioned, we're committed to give that easement to allow that to happen. And, um, there would have to be some work done, and, you know, and we're happy to contribute to some of that work and or make a contribution towards it.
So, doesn't this problem start up with the Mason, behind the Masonic?
Oh, it starts in the, but yeah, that's one of the areas, yeah, that there's, you know, you know, I'm not gonna get into the detail of who's putting water there or you know, that's not appropriate for this meeting, but that's an engineering issue, but, um, so, uh, John, can you point to Kev's property?
It's, uh, yeah, it's just this property right here.
Property and there's our property that abouts it. And, and basically the water comes in that area. And, and basically the water comes in that area.
Tends to pond in this, this area.
Goes on to Kevin's property and some other properties. And, and John, can you kind of show where that, where that on Unisircle, where that, uh, pipe is?
Yeah, there's, um, looks like at one time there was a head wall here. Um, so any water that was coming down here was captured by this head wall and went in the street drainage, um, in Unisircle. Uh, that has been filled in, that area has been filled in, so that's, that's not the only reason why it's backing up here, but that's part of it. So we're looking at, you know, potentially some way to connect through, um, from our property or even on the abutting properties to Unisircle. And what we're looking at right now is maybe a couple different scenarios. There's some catch patients or some street drainage in Mitchell Lane. Uh, you know, potentially looking at investigating that route as opposed to, but it, um, going out to Unisircle. But kind of the issue is, is that it, it's, it's going over property that we don't control.
Yeah, so we're going to try to work with folks in the area. Kevin's going to be part of that process and, and hopefully, you know, basically we're looking to provide a relief valve. That's what we're looking to try, as you can see, to, to get that water to an appropriate drainage system instead of it just having fill up there. And.
Okay.
That, that's kind of a summary of, of, uh, of the issue and, and how we've been working on it. So, so what we had to do is that, that circle that John drew on Unisircle, there was evidence there was a pipe going, going towards the problem. Across country pipe, and we were hoping that it, you know, that it was a pipe that maybe was clogged or, but what we found is that it had actually been, John, what's the word that Bill Renaud used that had been, um, it had been kind of.
Oh, it was actually, he said it was actually bricked in.
Was bricked in, so it was kind of abandoned. So that, that, you know, that pipe might be able to be reused and extended further, or there might be another path, but that's kind of where we are with the process at this point.
Okay.
That's the, that's the summary.
Any questions from members or comments from members of the board?
Yeah, I have one very quickly. I think it was more for when we're looking at the architecture, Jim, I think. Uh, Brian said lower the building a little bit and take a look at a wall. I think it was lower the building more than a little bit. I think at our last meeting, we asked about, you know, have we actually taken a look at parking under and moving the building? I think there was a lot more consternation than just lowering the building a little bit. Um, you know, a foot or two. Uh, I, I think it was a lot more consternation than that. Um, I, I think I, I, I don't know if I'm misremembering it, if anyone else wants to. But I, I thought it was more than just, let's look at a wall and lower it a little bit.
You got that right.
You, you are correct.
Okay. Um, I mean. We don't need to discuss here, obviously, but I just wanted to confirm that I think it was a lot more than, it, it was pretty significant.
Yes.
Okay.
Agreed. Any other comments or questions? Um, I guess, uh, one thing for John and for Brian. If that pipe existed, then was there a right of way basically through there originally that I think maybe you ought to be looking at? And did someone, when you say bricked up, did someone, when they built a house in there, decide that, you know, hey, we're going to fill this in? Or what? Because I think that house that's in that area was something more recently to the north of it, I guess. Was more recently maybe, uh, uh, built over time. But like, I just throw it out there. I don't want to get back into this discussion, quite frankly. I just think there's more to dig into.
Well, we dug into a lot. No, that, that, the pipe never went any further with Bill Renaud thought it was like a drainage thing for the yard maybe, but he was hoping it went further.
Yeah, I think, I think what he said was, it was about ten feet from the catch base and, you know, into towards the lot. So I guess is it that it probably ended pretty much right at the sideline of the road, um, when it was put in. And so it wouldn't really necessarily have been on, on the, the, um, private property. I think the, the four inch that he said was in the, that does extend a little further into the yard was probably added by the, the, the people. Either the, that, on that lot or abutting it, um, to help alleviate some of the water that was collecting there.
Well, this dogleg you show down here, can't most of that dogleg be in that one? Uh, one person basically has a big problem go across his property along the property line, like, sort of like we're showing?
Yeah, that's the positive, well, that's, we've, we've gone out there, actually did today, went out and located all this drainage out here, and we're going to see, you know, take a look in terms of elevation, whether we can get the water there or not, um. And then I, I think they'll be approaching those, those neighbors and, and.
Yeah. Yeah, let's let Bill Renaud solve this part of it and, uh, we'll get back. Uh, thank you. For us. Any other comments or questions from the board? Hearing not this point, uh, I see Mr. Gill here. So I, I will open it up, uh, to public comment. Mr. Gill? Can unmute yourself?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Uh, I, I do want to thank Brian and his team a, and his clients for, uh, loo- looking at this. Um, I, I really appreciate it. It's been an ongoing problem for some time. And, uh, a- any help is much appreciated. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing or hearing none, I will close it to the public comment.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this to our September twenty-seventh meeting. Do you think that's enough time, Brian?
Yes. Yeah, we gotta, we, we're, we're looking to move at this point. So yes.
Second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Matters continue to September twenty-seventh. Thank you. Thanks for the update.
Thank you all.
Next up is case twenty-three eighty-eight, uh, at signage for a special permit for signage at the eight Albion Street.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Attorney Brian McGrail is here for, um, the chess chum in Hays and Boba LLC. Uh, this is for a special permit for a sign that we've been working with, um, the Design Review Board. Uh, this property has already been permitted for its used, use as fast food for Boba tea, but the sign was a different application. Um, so we, um, we, uh, did not get that approved the sa- at the same time because we had a lot of work to deal with the Design Review Board on this and the great process. We, this was a tricky one because this is the building that has that little roof that sticks out. And we wanted to, you know, we wanted to, and the Design Review Board wanted us to do a, um, uh, a, a, a sign that, um, that, that would not, um, you know, kind of would get lower to the ground. Uh, bracket signed on the building that would, you know, get, get as low to the ground as we could, but we were dealing with that roof. So it was really a, a cooperative effort and I think we've come up with a great, uh, sign plan for this, uh, that I know that the, uh, the D I V is, um, uh, Design Review Board is happy with, and Jim will speak to that. They've issued a memo on that. And you have it, and Mr. Chair, I just forwarded it to you. Uh, it should be in your email momentarily, if you wouldn't mind, um, if you could try to share that memo because I can't. And then, uh, Jim can talk about it because, uh, this was a great process. Um, Jim and his team on the Design Review Board really designed the sign because we were really struggling with it on how to, how to maximize, um, the ability to get it down towards the ground.
So while you're pulling that up, Tom?
Yep.
Um, let me talk to this. So we had a bunch, we had at least three meetings with a client. Uh, we had a pre-meeting basically because he wasn't sure what he wanted to do. And we've had at least one bracket sign at this building already, which was quite a ways up in the air. And the business basically didn't last long. Um, the problem is that this building, both the roof and the windows, uh, in that area, which are being changed. Um, as a jewelry store originally just had small windows, so they're making it bigger. But the problem is that they have no real space for wall sign. And so by, and, and this is not unsimilar, say, to the art center. Where in fact, the best thing for this building is to put a bracket sign. But a bracket sign that would make up for the wall sign. So it's, so they're asking, um, basically, and we're, we are recommending approval that the bracket sign basically be larger than the nine square feet. Um, in this particular case, it's, um, going to be eleven point eight square feet. And that it be lowered and be structured in such a way that it can fit into the roof structure. So it can get even lower. So you get more pedestrian, pedestrian observation of the sign as well as people driving up the street at the same time. So it has similar factors playing against it that, uh, was at the art center. The art center had a lot of architectural features that stopped it from having a wall sign. This one has a projecting roof that causes the problem. Okay, are people seeing this? No.
I am. We have seen the email, Tom, you can open the PDF.
Also, I should note, the other thing is we're recommending it be a little bit higher to, to basically take advantage of the roof. But at the same time, be lower than being like the previous sign that was there. How about that? If you scale it down a little bit, Tom. So there are two things here. One, they've got to be granted permission under a special permit to have a bracket sign under the restrictions. And then basically we're recommending that the sign itself be larger than nine square feet and be eleven point eight square feet. And then at the height, instead of limiting it, the height to the top of the sign, not the bracket, be greater than fourteen feet and be fifteen point six to allow for it to fit in to the roof. Um, if you can push to the next page, it will sh- show the sign, Tom. So it's, this is rounded at the bottom. Um, you can't, can you rotate this at all? Yes, you can on the far right. There we go. So you see where by rounding it originally had it squared. Rounding it basically, we can drop it further onto the, near the roof and get it closer to the street level. So pedestrians can see this, but at the same time, so can cars. And what you see where the windows are, they're, they're going to be cut into that wood panel above. So there's absolutely no space for wall signs on this thing. So this will be the one and only sign for this business is what hangs up there. And the board makes a recommendation that this be acceptable, accepted.
Is there any lighting on it? It didn't look like it.
No, they haven't. They have not asked for any lighting.
Okay, no.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Does anyone need to keep me to keep this up for a motion?
Um, just what's the date of this memo?
Uh, top, move it up. September eleventh. And. I don't see a date on the plans, Chip. There is one. Tops, six thirteen.
I'm going to keep it as, as everything that was presented to us in the memo along with the plans.
Okay. With no other comments, questions from the board, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this matter? Hearing or seeing none? Pleasure of the board.
So I move, Mr. Chairman, see if this works. I move that we, based on the design review, review boards presentation tonight and memo sent to us for their recommendation of approval of this sign. I move that we approve, uh, the sign as presented to us this evening in the memo with the appropriate special permits and variances needed, uh, to, to have a bracket sign, uh, with a different size and a different height as noted in their memo of nine eleven and presented to us this evening with drawings of the sign and the review of the board.
I think that works.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? The regular voting members and Greg, uh, Chip?
Yes.
I'm not a voting member. Okay, we'll add Mickey too. So Chip, Joe?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
That is approved. Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
On to new hearings, case twenty-four dash six, Michael A. Picardi, Nine Woodville Circle.
Great, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, for the record, Attorney Brian McGrail on behalf of, uh, Michael A. Picardi, who was the owner of the property at Nine Woodville Circle. Mike is here with us tonight at the top of your screen. Um, Mike has been a resident of Wakefield, uh, sometime. He's also a, um, captain in the United States Marine Corps for twenty-seven years, continuing in that position. Um, so he served that country well and continues to do so. Um, and also John Ogrin is here. He is our, uh, site civil engineer. Uh, John, I'm going to have to ask you help on the sharing of the site plan if you could.
Yep.
This is a pretty, uh, straightforward application for a determination or finding with respect to the extension of non-conforming use under one ninety fifty of the zoning by law to allow in addition, uh, onto, uh, Mr. Picardi's, uh, single family dwelling at Nine Woodville Circle. Um, and basically, this is, this is pretty unique. We dealt with this once before. Um, I'm going to go through the zoning table on this property and the only relief that, uh, that is needed is to allow it to go closer to the stream under our bylaw, uh, section one ninety thirty-one says no, uh, structure should be within fifty feet of the stream, and we're going within that. We've already been, uh, to the Conservation Commission. Uh, John, uh, could you tell, uh, the board the status and what transpired at the Concom?
Um, yeah, so we had a couple hearings with them, um. Basically, they wanted us to look at essentially keeping the impervious area on the site the same. So we did that by, um, there's an existing driveway that comes down the side and it winds out in the back. We're going to be removing a portion of, of that driveway, um, to basically balance out the impervious area and, um, once we provided them with that information, um, they did issue an order of conditions.
They've approved the project, um, and, and as you know, one ninety thirty-one, um, uh, deals with, you know, a stream. So that's, that's really, I'm going to read you the provision under that section. Section one ninety dash thirty-one. Um, H, which says setback from open stream and no caution, only building a structure be permitted within fifty feet of the embankment of an A open stream is defined by the Conservation Commission using the applicable Massachusetts Department of Environmental Quality Engineering Standards. And historically, this board has deferred to Concom on this issue in this section of the bylaw. But in any event, uh, I just want to go through the zoning table to show you how compliant this lot is. Um, the first requirement is front yard setback. This property is in a single residence zoning district. Twenty feet is required. It currently has twenty-four point eight and it's going to be twenty-four. Twenty feet is required. It currently has twenty-four point eight and it's gonna be twenty-four point four, still in compliance by, uh. Over four feet. Side yard setback fifteen feet is required. It's sixteen. Um, and on the other side, this side is not even close to even get, getting near, um. The, the setback, it meets it by a mile. Um, then the rear set, uh, the rear setback. Um, well, the proposed on that, on, on that side yard is twenty-eight point nine fifteen is required. So it does meet it by a mile. The rear setback twenty-five feet is required. Existing is forty-two feet. We're gonna again meet that easily at thirty feet. So, so far fully in compliance. Minimum frontage hundred feet is required, one oh two point seventy-five exists. Obviously, that doesn't change. In compliance, lot width a hundred feet. One oh nine point one is existing, one oh nine point one proposed, uh, fully in compliance. Lot area. Twelve thousand square feet. It meets the requirement and stays in compliance. Upland requirement that you can only have a certain amount of upland. So that even though there's wetlands involved. Seventy-five percent of the required lot area needs to be upland. We have eighty-nine percent, so it's in compliance. Coefficient of regularity for the lot is, has to be graded in point six five or point nine oh. Maximum building coverage thirty percent. It was seven point seven. It's only gonna be fourteen point three. So easily in compliance on that. Minimum open area is forty percent. Uh, with the driveway that's being removed, it stays the same. So we're gonna remain at seventy-seven percent. Um, and this is the issue that, that triggers the need for the finding fifty feet from the, uh, from the open stream. Currently at forty point nine, so it's not in compliance on that. And we're going a little bit closer to twenty-seven feet. The shed, it's, uh, it meets the requirement. And the front yard open area has to be sixty percent. We're at eighty-two point two. We're gonna be at sixty-four point four. So it, um, it meets, it meets the requirement. Um, I submitted a sketch. With the application that kinda just showed a rough idea of the addition. It's gonna be a two-story addition that's gonna be added on. Um, the, it's gonna be a two-car garage underneath, Mr., uh. Picardi is, uh, proposing to do some type of either a great room up there. Uh, bedroom maybe, uh, bathroom, but it's just gonna be living area, additional living area. Uh, that he plans on putting there. Um, I sent the sketch in. We really don't wanna be tied to any architectural. Uh, component on this. We are tied to the footprint because it's on the plan. Um, it won't be any greater than that proposed footprint. Um, but the, the key component here, it's only the setback from the stream. So. Um, I think this is a, an easy finding. Um, that, um. You know, although it intensifies the existing non-conformity by going closer. It's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Or the town, especially considering the conservation approval. So we would respectfully ask you to make that finding.
Okay, thank you. Uh, questions, comments from the board?
For a change, I think Brian's right. This is an easy one.
Brian, if you could just stop sharing, then it's a little easier to.
Oh, John, that's you.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, conservation, if conservation has no issue, then I have no issue.
I agree with that, Joe.
Thing from conservation?
Didn't Brian say?
Well, I know he said it. I'm asking if we're seeing it.
Brian wouldn't like.
I mean, I can, I can send the, um, order of conditions. If you'd like.
Could be on the record.
John can send them in, Chip, but he's on the record that they've issued the order.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm not questioning that you guys are.
But I didn't, uh, Mr. Chair, did you get any memos on this? Cause I, you, you know, if you get anything, any comments on this?
No, Gail's great about.
Oh, it's a finding. It's a finding.
I would, I would just. I find it okay as long as they did what they did. So if John can send the order of conditions. And that that's as an approval, I think it should just be in the record.
Okay.
I mean, I don't question it, that's for sure. Not with you two guys.
Anybody else? I'll leave that one alone.
We only get one opportunity to do that. This can never come back.
That's true.
All right, hearing none. I'm gonna open up to the, uh, public. Is there any members of the public here that would like to comment on this matter? Hearing or seeing none, uh, back to the board.
So I move that we find in favor of the applicant. That although what's being proposed tonight, uh, is intensifying the non-conformity. Of one ninety dash thirty-one moving the stream close, moving the. Structure closer to the stream. That it certainly does not in, intensify the non-conformity. And even if it did, it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood in that case. So I move that we find. In favor of the applicant based on the presentation tonight.
Any discussion on the motion? We'll do regular, uh, voting members and consuming this time. Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Assuming?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Which unanimous. Good luck, Mr. Picardi.
Thank you, folks. Much appreciated.
Thank you for your service.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Attorney McGrail. Thank you.
All right, moving on to other matters, two hundred Water Street. Cataldo Ambulance. Possible minor modification.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrail here for, um, R and D, ID and D. LLC, the owner of property at two hundred Water Street, which is Cataldo Ambulance. Um, they require, requesting a, um, what, what they hope is deemed to be a minor modification of their, uh, permits that were issued. Um, and what they're looking to do is, um, make a change on, uh, two, two sides of the bill, uh, of the building on the facade. Material. Um, and I think, uh, probably the best way to. To do this. And guess what? I figured out how to, how to, my, my, uh, computer started working again, thankfully. So if I can, I'm gonna share my screen on this. This is a project that was before the board. Approximately a year ago, um, and basically it's Cataldo Ambulance is at two hundred Water Street. It's under construction and this is the, this is the as-approved plan. Um, just to orient you, uh, with the building. So, uh, at the bottom of the screen, you've got Water Street. The building is kind of on an angle. So this side of the building right here with the windows and doors faces out towards Water Street. The garage door also kinda faces to Water Street. The back of the building faces Narsala Playground. This side of the building faces, no, no, never, never, never land. It's woods in, in the river and wetlands. So there's nobody there. So the way this was permitted, um, the materials that are on the building. Are a metal paneling system. Um, which looks nice, uh, but unfortunately. And this is one of those circumstances that, um, Mr. Cataldo is not coming to the board saying, oh, I can't, I can't get the material. I can't find it. He's coming to the board to tell you that he needs help financially because. Um, as he's priced this material out for the building, it is excessive. Um, and what he's looking to do, um, on the building is. The two sides that really have no impact from the public way. The side that faces the playground. And this is really not an active area of the playground. The ball field is way over here. So there's not a lot of activity going on in this area. And this side of the building is requesting just to change those two sides of the building to stucco. And keep the metal on. Where it faces out towards Water Street and where you can see it on an angle coming the other way on Water Street. So in essence. This, this rendering in the top left is where the metal panels would be. Um, and then this back part here at the top is what faces Narsala. And then this side is what faces, um, the river. Um, in doing that, in making those changes. He's gonna save somewhere between probably a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand dollars. So it's significant. Um, and, and, um, he would like to have the stucco color match the color. I talked to him about that today. Of the panels to match it. And he would like to continue the blue line around the building. So that will be painted. Um, and it would just match up. Um, so what we have. Posted. What was submitted. Modification plan. Knows that those sides of the building would be replaced, proposed metal panel wall system with a new self. Uh, furring stucco facade. Uh, self-furring, uh, metal lathe system and the paint color says to be determined, but. You know, we would, you know, uh, you know, this will result if you did approve in a letter to the building inspector and it will be confirmed. It's to be in a color that matches the metal panel systems on the other side with the blue stripe continuing.
It will match in color, Brian, but not necess, not in texture because it is. So, you know, the question I think maybe it needs to be asked from point of the view of the board. Is, should it be a smooth texture, a sand texture, or from your point of view of your client? And then on these elevations, I think if this becomes for record. Is I think you, we should show the blue line going around the building since that's what he's proposing as well. I, I just, uh, for a comment to, to the rest of the board members, since I've studied this a little bit. Um, in many cases, basically. Um, many, many cases, basically buildings on the backsides are not necessarily carried around with the same materials. Particularly on alleys. In this case, it's Narsala Field, so it does get some exposure. But it doesn't mean that, uh, buildings shouldn't have, or traditionally basically haven't had. A different material on the backside. Where the face of the building is where you put your, your money. It's also where you put the design, basically. And for my point of view, I think this is a halfway decent solution. Or good solution.
I guess, uh, uh, my only question is I, I don't really have an overall problem. Would Jim describe it? How did they get this far into it and realize it now?
Uh, to be honest, the architect specked it. My client had no idea on cost and then he went out to price it and said, holy smokes. Which happens. You know, he relied on the architect. He said, no, I designed the building. And then when he, when he, when he, when he priced it out with the contractors, they said, do you have any idea what this stuff costs? So that's the honest answer.
Uh, be careful of how you talk about architects, will you?
Well, I, I don't think it was the architect, you know, the architect, you know, maybe it was a miscommunication between the client and the architect, but. You know, I'm not blaming it, but that's, that's the truth.
Brian, you know what's going on over there? Cause I feel like my son plays baseball over there. I feel like it's been sitting there for the last.
Oh, yeah, they were, they were, we, yeah, uh, um, um, it had to go through. Um. A peer review with the building department on, on structural and stuff like that. So we took, uh, it was quite a bit of time working. And, and it was like his fault. He, he, you know, it was, it was a. It was a struggle for my client and I to get what we needed to get to the building inspector, for the building inspector to be able to, to issue the permit.
Yeah, it looks like they took a sledgehammer to it and then just kinda walked away.
Yeah, because they did demo and then, and then the building inspector rightfully needed. Certain information on structural, life safety, mechanicals in. To get that, um, from, uh, members of our team was like, uh, it was not, it wasn't easy. It took a lot of time. So. It's, 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 um.
Brian, is there a, um, to Jim's point, is there a finished spec? Whether it's.
I don't know about that. I, you know, I, I, I'm concerned because I don't wanna commit to something. I don't know what self-furring stucco facade means. I mean, furring to me means it might be rough. Does it really matter?
That's spurred out from the building, so. I, I personally don't care what it is. Jim, do you care?
No.
All right, then we don't even need to spec it.
So Jim, my, my question about the material, I guess Chip too, goes to your question. I mean, it's, yeah, you can see it. It's up. It's the field side though. No one's going right up to this building. Essentially painting it gray, it'll look like the rest of the material anyways, right?
From a distance, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Cause I suspect that's, that's how it'll be seen, right? No one's gonna be. Inspecting it from the back.
It's gonna look a heck of a lot better than what was there before.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's not how we should judge.
And not only that, Craig, not only that, there's vegetation along the fence line.
Yeah, no, understood. But just say, you know, you, you, you still can see it, but it, yeah, but it's painted.
There, yeah, I, and, and quite frankly, the way I look at these things and as minor modifications, whether it's right or not. I'm like, would we have approved it if it was presented to us originally this way? And yes, I would have. So I don't have a problem with it. Or I would bet it was okay. Because as Jim speaks to it often, the hidden sides. You know, we, we also often talk about, oh, you know, we don't need to do the same way. Think about the Main Street conversation, right? We didn't have to do the same windows and back because nobody's gonna see him. Well. Here you go. Here's another situation very similar to that. So, Mr. Chair, if you would like, I move that we find this as a minor modification. And, uh, just make sure that when the plans are presented to the building inspector, that there's a color. Match and rendering appropriate for the blue line and. Uh, a color actually that matches, that can be specified.
That good.
Any discussion? Do our regular voting members and Mickey. Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right.
Thank you very much.
Brian, when it comes through the building department for a permit, I'll be looking at those elements, make sure that they come through.
I'm gonna send you the plan, Jim, before I send it to the, uh, you know, I'm gonna, uh, I'll send the draft letter to you and Tom with the revised plan. For you to see it before, because Tom's gonna sign that.
Well, I, I just like, uh, mine is not so much that as it is that. We, as said here, we're gonna have, we're gonna match the front. And we're gonna match the band.
Yes.
All right, I'd like to make sure we know what that is.
Okay.
All right, how they're dealing with it. That's all.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to. Other matters, two seventy-one Vernon Street Verizon Wireless modifications to existing telecommunications facility. Someone here for that?
Yes, hello. This is Audrey Mayer representing Verizon in this matter. How's everyone doing this evening?
Just fine.
Could you speak up just to hear, please?
Nope. Can you hear me a bit better now?
Yes.
Yep.
Perfect. So I'd be happy to share my screen. You all should have received a package regarding this matter. Um, I have my. Initial letter here representing the plan. As for this modification, we just last year did put some antennas and radios within the church steeple at two seventy-one Vernon Street. This new proposed modification is a bit of a combination of not only to. Watertight and reinforce some of the issues that the landlord has been having with leaks within the church steeple. Along with adding some ventilation in to help with the. Basically, the antennas and radios. It's more of a preventative measure, um, not so much of for overheating anything on to the extent of a fire. But if the equipment overheats, then Verizon doesn't receive a signal. So they are, it's proposing to add some ventilation into this. Particular steeple. So. It might look like. Not much, though I know we have some engineers and architects on the board. But the proposed plan, so. In this upper portion of the steeple, we currently have our antennas placed. But we are more concerned with adding the ventilation system more in the lower rad center of the steeple. And relocating a couple of the radios. I did include in the package that we had, our engineering firm already look at. Any potential structural implications. There's not going to be an additional loading. It's more of a relocation. All the equipment will be contained within the steeple. So we are not going to have any changes visually as well. So we are not going to have any changes visually as well. Um, I will skip ahead a bit to more of the. Roof repair portion. They did include along with the LA with the landlord. Again, they've been in, working with us in tandem of getting both of these projects at the same time. But there have been some concerns, as you can see, we have had some weathering and some water damage to the steeple itself. So our proposed plan is to replace some of the louvers within the steeple in Belfry. And we also intend on moving some of the radios within so that we can install better ventilation. Again, we hope that will help with not only with. Some of the water conditions, but with any potential overheating that can be caused from. Any of the equipment, again, not so much to the degree where it would be. Detrimental to the steeple itself. The overheating concern is more so so that the. The way that I have been taught to explain it is that if you leave your phone out in the sun too long, you know, sometimes it says I can't work anymore. Basically, that's what happens with the antennas and radios sometimes. So additional ventilation and also replacing some of the louvers and some of the water ceiling for the church steeple itself. That is the intended proposal for this particular project. And it has also been a concern. We understand that most of the church staples and. Some of these more historic properties within the town, we would like to also maintain. The visual integrity and not change so much of these visual implications. So everything will look the same. It will all be painted to match. But the materials may be replaced with, um, what we call radio frequency penetrable. Plastics so that we can actually have the frequencies of the antennas and radios still emit through while also maintaining the appearance of the church. Um, I will leave it open for any questions. I think it's pretty straightforward, but, uh, I'm not sure what anyone may have concerns with.
So this is Jim McBane. So, um, you, are you replacing the louvers as they are with something newer or? With more free air out of them or through them? Or are you, are you putting more, or are you putting more louvers in?
We are replacing the current louvers with a lighter material that will also be weather tight. As well as allow for frequencies to transmit through.
But they'll be of the same shape?
Of same shape, of same size. We are replacing the existing. We are not adding any additional. Or we are not making any new spaces for louvers.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
This is different than what we normally see. Because this is kind of what I would call repairs and maintenance. To the structure as compared to, you know, upgrading. But does this still fall under the same act?
I would think basically it falls in two categories as I think where you're going, basically as a maintenance come. Item here.
I mean, I don't even know, maintenance, are we even? You know, to, to repair damage. Uh, I'm just curious. I mean, normally we say, you know. We, we got an antenna and a receiver and a radio and a listen to that and. They're swapping it out to four G, but I don't hear any of that. I hear that we've got water issues. We need to replace louvers. We got an overheating issue. We need to replace louvers. We've got some roof lakes. We're fixing that. I mean. The, what? I would, maybe, maybe you, what, what are you requesting us to approve?
Well, I, I did, uh, I did present it. I know that last time that I had to go through the process when we were installing antennas and radios about a year ago. We had to go through the process because it was. Additional equipment. Now at this juncture, the equipment is not. Being rem- removed or additional equipment being installed, but we will be relocating some items. Within the steeple, again, the exterior will not change in terms of appearance in any way. Because it was in tandem with doing these roof repairs. Our landlord did request that we went through all necessary zoning and building permits for it. But all the existing equipment that was approved previously, I believe it was. August or September of two thousand twenty-two. That we did this, um, we have the same equipment, but it will be changed a little bit within the steeple, steeple, but it won't actually change the appearance externally. So we were asked to go through all necessary. Any requirements.
So Chip, to your point. They're not adding, they're not subtracting. Uh, anything in here normally it's, you know, they're going to four G or something else and they get to put new equipment in. Oh, they got to bring a transformer.
Did that.
Yeah, so, so. The only thing here is maintenance and the only concern I think the board should have on this. Is to be aware of it because we approved the steeple to begin with and the design of the steeple. If they were to come. Back and say, well, we're going to do something to the steeple that changes the character of it. Then I think we should be concerned. The fact that they're having to do maintenance, I don't think is any of our concern. It, it needs to be our concern.
Okay.
You know, what I have in the.
Mister Chair, what, do you have a feel for what they're requesting or?
I mean, I know. What I have in the file is the normal letter. Referencing the middle class tax relief and job in twenty twelve. That we get when they're, to your point, when they're swapping out. Equipment.
I mean, I, I guess we could say. You know, we heard that they're moving stuff inside and what they're doing. Is fine with us and then that way they're. Great with their landlord and the town and there'd be no issues.
Well, what they do, what I think I heard here in her description was Reverend Mortimer. Basically has asked her to go to the town because he's gone through this three times. Basically with the original designs and like, he just wants to make sure that he's dotted all his dotted and, and, you know. Capitalized every piece that he has to. And we just turn around and say. It doesn't affect us. It's not part of, we don't have to deal with it or whatever you want to say.
Well, I, I guess, so has she gone for building permits yet? Have you gone to Ben? Has he said he needs something from us?
No.
I, I was typically, I have been used to again for last year when I went through this process, when we were requesting for the. Equipment that is currently within the steeple. I went through the zoning process again. Like I said, our, our landlords requested, they said that they were okay with everything we were doing as long as we went through each channel to make sure that. Zoning, building, et cetera, was okay with us. The biggest move in terms of Horizon's equipment is that it will be moving slightly down in, in the steeple. It again, it is all contained. Um, as you said, Jim, I think it's more about dotting the i's and crossing the t's. And my next step now is I do actually even for part of this meeting, I have been putting together most of my building permit application, which I was. Hoping to also have the zoning sign off as well. So it's, uh. Mr. Hatfield, I believe, once it's at desk, he will understand that we have gone through all of our due diligence.
So to me, it seems like we just need to be concerned with the moving down of the. Or lowering of the equipment.
Yeah, I think we just.
For, for these purposes.
Normal middle class act.
Yeah. And then if there was, I don't know the background, Jim, if there was some sort of permit. The landlord, whoever owns the property would have to come to us if this changes to the steeple and there was some sort of. I don't know, per- permit for that. They would have to come to us for a modification of the steeple.
Yeah, Greg, I, I think if this was a normal. Cell phone tower. Uh, 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 it's with, where you're moving the equipment up and down and it's visual. Then maybe you're right. On the other hand, this is all concealed.
No, agreed. I don't think I would be right if it was a normal tower. It would all be within the jobs act. Or, or whatever act it was. This isn't, this is a steeple. It's inside there. All we have to worry about is i- in this application. Uh, outside if there's a separate permit for the steeple.
Well, let's make, let's make it easy and just say, fine. And but we don't deal, we're not dealing the, with the maintenance. It's a maintenance issue. Doesn't involve us.
Yeah, and if Ben thought he needed, or somebody thought they needed a minor modification or something to the steeple, then they still have to come for that.
Right.
I mean, I think we can, I think we.
Oh, my, my apologies. Go ahead, Chip.
Nope, whatever. I mean, you, you're here. I, we're guessing.
Well, and I, and I don't think she would know anyways, right? Like, uh, she wasn't part of the.
Would change. A- again, we're, we're working very in tandem with the landlord of this. We were presented with the roof leak issues. After the fact of us wanting to work on the overheating concern. It's more of a preventative. Um, to install some of that ventilation equipment anyhow. So when we presented that with the landlord, they presented us with, uh, some roof leak issues. They are going to be reviewing and approving all my building permit before I can even submit it regardless. So if anything were to come up, I would imagine it would be at the point of construction. If anything were to surpass what we already anticipate. That's where I would just say anything would change. But again, I would probably send back to you all if there's going to be any. Change in the appearance or the steeple itself. But at this juncture, uh, we are just working on putting together the ventilation system along with. Because we will be in the same area at the same time, making sure that we work on some of these leaks and seals. I mean, I, I'm down in Connecticut actually, but I think we always experience some extra rainfall and flooding this year. So that is kind of the goal right now is to make sure that we can. Work in the same area at the same time, make sure that we, but we are only moving those radars because we want to install that ventilation system. So they are dropping down lower so we can install some fans and ventilation. At a higher point, so we can better circulate throughout while also replacing louvers, resealing some of the crack field, et cetera. Some of the water damage that has already occurred and we are working on the same space. If anything is to come up later. Again, there are a lot of eyes on this one. So if anything were to change, I'd be coming back to you if you all.
So, so, Mr. Chair, I think that because they're putting in equipment. Whether it's ventilation, equipment, fans, whatever. And that they're moving some radios and some antennas. That. We can approve. Under the middle class act that work. And thus. Kind of just as we normally would. And then as she said, if there's something else, she'll have to come back in front of us, but. That would at least, cause that falls under the category of equipment. And moving of equipment.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Yeah. So I, if you would, I find, uh. And you've got the wording in front of you in the letter, but I find that. Uh, gi- given what was presented to us tonight. That we approve the, with the middle class. Uh, act, the work being presented to us that falls under it and that we approve it.
Second now.
Any discussion? Regular members and Greg, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip? I mean, uh, Jim, sorry, Jim.
Yes.
Uh, Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that is all set.
Much appreciated. Thank you all for your time. If no one else has any other questions for me, I will let you carry on with the rest of your meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We are on to clerk in board comments.
I get enough.
I enjoyed Jim's pre-email, so it doesn't last another half hour.
Yes, that was good.
Yeah.
I, I was like, wow.
That was good. All right, um. Hearing nothing.
And appreciated by the way. So thank you for that.
Very much.
Move on to approve the minutes of August sixteenth.
I move that we approve the August sixteenth minutes.
Expertly done.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll just do this as a group all in favor.
Yay. I move that we adjourn.
Always in order. And I think we have to do anything, take a vote on that.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.